Six o'clock Horizon time, just shy. All right, welcome everybody. Want to make sure of those who are remote can hear us. I will just do a quick, okay, got a thumbs up from Councilmember Kurtz and I am there's Councilmember Fuller. Moving everybody around, all right, everybody, welcome to our March first Tuesday, March first, 2022 City Council meeting. Being held remotely and in person here at City Hall. Under Governor Inslee's Washington Ready Plan, members of the public may attend Liberty Lake City Council meetings. In person at City Hall at the address provided above. Or via Zoom at the link below. Members of the public will be allowed to comment in person or via Zoom as described on the last page of this agenda. Per Governor Inslee's Expanded Emergency Order Proclamation twenty dash twenty five reinstituting a statewide mask mandate. Regardless of vaccination status, all those entering or remaining in City Hall must wear a mask or face covering. Masks are available for the public at City Hall. So we are going to start off with our six o'clock trailhead. Discussion, I'll do a quick roll call of City Councilmembers, Councilmember Cargill.
Here.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz. Councilmember Fuller.
Here.
Great ask, but the temperature is where you are. And Councilmember Baird.
Here.
Okay, all right. We are. Down a council member due to Councilmember Kennedy's resignation and Councilmember Dunn is out for family health. We will do the excusals at the regular meeting. All right, so I guess we can get started. I apologize everybody for missing last week, I was out of state. And thank you for to Mayor Pro Tem Kennedy for running last week's meeting. So Lisa and our Trailhead team, I'm gonna go ahead and let you guys kick this off tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. We have on the call tonight with us Jonathan Miller, our project manager, along with. Scott McLaughlin from Bowton, Steve Roth and Keith Dixon from Architects West. And I think Steve is gonna lead us off.
Right, thank you.
Okay, perfect, let's see, is it all right if I share my screen?
Go ahead.
Okay, let's see if I can make this work. Okay, hopefully everybody can see the cover slide that has the agenda on it and a picture of the golf course, can everybody see that?
Not quite yet, but it says you're you're starting to screen share.
Okay. All right, let me know when it comes up.
Steve, you were having this problem earlier yesterday, do you wanna forward the presentation to me and I can maybe call it up?
Yeah, I can, I can do that. If it pops up in the meantime, please let me know.
We will. And while we're waiting, just want to remind councilmembers here and remotely to remember to make sure your mics are close by so we can hear you.
Okay, Lisa, I just sent it to you.
Right, usually I'll be my send and receive.
I'm gonna stop sharing and then try again and see if that works. So again, let me know if anyone can see the title slide with agenda on it.
Not yet.
I just received your presentation, Steve. Todd, can you let me share my screen?
There we go.
Okay, perfect, thank you Lisa and Todd, I appreciate that. Apologize for the technical difficulties, I don't believe it's my fault, but anyway. Hopefully everyone can see the screen, the title slide. So tonight, the intent is that we essentially present to the committee where we stand with the design based on. Decisions and feedback that we received at the last meeting, so. We're gonna go over the the current scope of the project and the design. In terms of the floor plan, the site plan, and then a final cost estimate. And then we'll talk about the next steps after that, so Lisa, if you or whoever, I guess it's Lisa, could go to the next slide. Okay, so as a reminder from last time, this was the division of scope that was agreed upon. On the left, the design team is responsible for the design of the clubhouse building. And the new parking lot with a budget of six point four million that was voted on and decided at the last council meeting. On the right, the city of Liberty Lake will be responsible for the driving range, poles and netting. With a budget of two million or whatever is finally determined to be that cost by the city, so. So we've did, we've proceeded with focusing on the scope and budget that's on the left of the green line on the slide. So if you click to the next slide, please. Okay, so we're gonna talk about the design of the building tonight, so really quick, I wanted to show this slide which. The the design committee has seen, but the council has not had the benefit of seeing this yet, essentially. One of the first steps in our design process is to perform an analysis of the existing site that we're designing on. The things I wanna point out about this tonight are two things, one. The red circle in the middle represents the convergence of views now. The design principles listed at the bottom of the slide, prominent functional and indoor outdoor were. Essentially agreed upon as the main drivers behind the design of this building, so. The perception of it by the public, by the city of Liberty Lake, the the prominence of it. Is determined within that red circle, that's where people will will see whatever this building is gonna be. The green line right there, the green dash line represents kind of the view line and the arrows. Out from that are the 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 view quality coming from about that line, so you can see the best views are of the golf course itself. Less or so of the drive range, now this is maybe common sense, but we diagram this out to test out some of the design ideas that we put forth. The yellow dash line represents the buildable area, so we really could put a building in a parking lot anywhere. Within that zone right there, and that doesn't include the first T, which would mean relocation of that T, so that was an option that we studied at the beginning. The main entry identity off of Country Vista Drive is is the current. Identity of the building as you drive in, that's how you perceive this facility as a member of the public or as a golfer or or community or whoever. So those are the major factors that kind of determine how we set up the architecture of the building, so. And we'll come back to this, so if you could go to the next slide, please, Lisa. Okay, so this is the program for the building that we've decided. Not not we, the design team, but has been decided decided in general that are the targets. The pro shop of about two thousand square feet and that pro shop, of course incorporates all the support rooms and functions that a normal pro shop would have. A flex space of around two thousand square feet, we'll get into detail on these spaces later. Restaurant, right now, a twenty six hundred square feet is determined to be the minimum sized restaurant. That would be desired to be leased by a potential restaurant tenants. The recommended size was more like three to four thousand square feet for maximum leasability. However, the budget that we're faced with will only allow us to build. The minimum sized spaces and that in this instance, the restaurant being twenty six hundred square feet is still a leasable space, still desirable by. Certain number of tenants and it's the smallest space we can build in this case. And then the lower level is the existing foundation of the existing building and that's thirty five hundred square feet fixed. That we're dealing with and will be remodeled and we'll also talk about that more later. So the total enclosed building that we're shooting for here is ten thousand one hundred square feet. And there's an outdoor event space, essentially a deck or patio, whatever term you'd like to use of about two thousand square feet. So Lisa, if you could click to the next slide, please. So these are the floor plans. On the main level, we've separated the program into essentially two separate buildings, on the far upper left of this slide, you can see it in orange, the pro shop. So the pro shop in total is about two thousand square feet. The the layout of it is shown right there, this is the first initial conceptual layout of the pro shop and includes a. Couple of office spaces and a toilet room, so just the absolute basics are in here. As that's a no frills pro shop, but it does include. A sales floor area of about eight to nine hundred square feet, which is approximately double the current sales floor of the existing pro shop. On the same main level, just one section to the right, you can see the flex space in dark blue. The restaurant in light blue and then the outdoor event space in light green. The flex space, again, about two thousand square feet total, which yields approximately fifteen hundred square feet of actual event area. And the seating we're showing there is approximately ninety people, those are eight top tables right there, so the intent is about a hundred people in that space. That arrangement of eight top tables will seat about eighty eight, so we're getting pretty close to that in different. Arrangements of seating and easily fit an event of a hundred people in different configurations in that room, a hundred people was the target. In the restaurant, you know, we're not designing the interior of the restaurant, but that light blue rectangle represents the twenty six hundred square foot space. The tenant would come in and design, we've just indicated some possibilities for that tenant to take advantage of and one. Is the seating area they show there that could be opened up to become. Joined with the flex space or also joined with the outdoor event space, and let me back up one moment, back to the flex space. Where we see gaps in the walls around that space, the intent is that those would be operable sections of wall. Slide them open or fold them open or swing them open or whatever it is, so that you can move. An event or expand an event out onto the outdoor space or potentially join it with the restaurant, so essentially. We're sharing and doubling up use of spaces as much as possible to gain maximum functionality and flexibility for this building. In a small package. So back to the restaurant, you can see the seating area is oriented so that it can expand out onto the outdoor event space, it can expand into the flex space. On the lower right corner, there is a concept of an indoor outdoor bar, now again, we're not designing the restaurant, but this is a suggestion to a potential tenant that they have an opportunity. To create this and we'll show some photos of the character of what that means in the next couple slides. So then the outdoor event space wraps around and you can see it's rotated a little bit from the existing building footprint and the purpose of that is to take. Maximum advantage of view, that outdoor event space is all about the view of the golf course, that's that's it's. Its main purpose really is to take in that view, so we've positioned it to take maximum advantage of that. You can also see the pro shop has been rotated slightly from the grid of the plan, also to take advantage of the view towards T number one. And towards green number nine, so that it can supervise the operations of the course. On the lower level, that is the footprint of the existing building, it's thirty five hundred square feet in concrete. So we're basically scraping out the guts of that, remodeling it into. Cart storage and you can see the lineup of carts right there, the rest of the spaces are the utility spaces for the clubhouse, so there are electrical rooms, mechanical rooms. IT rooms, there is some additional storage space in that basement. Is not intended for the public to go down there, it's intended to be all utility to serve. The functions of the golf course to serve the pro shop to be the necessary spaces that aren't. Really publicly accessible, we also do have an elevator in this plan. You can see it in the flex space and as it comes down to the existing lower level, the elevator and machine room are down in that. Location, now that is an optional thing. Our thought though is that the public would, or not the public, I'm sorry, but employees, staff of the golf course. With frequent access down to those lower levels and the storage spaces. If you happen to have an employee in wheelchair, that asking them to go outside on a ramp in the winter and. You know, hairpin turn back and forth down the hill to get down one story might be a lot to ask, so we did put an elevator into this design. So again, overall, we've got a total building square foot of ten thousand one hundred square feet, outdoor event of two thousand. And then if we could click to the next slide, Lisa, we can always come back to questions. So these are some example character photos of what we're talking about in some of these cases, in the upper right. Is a pro shop, now what this is intended to convey is that the the finishes, the architecture here are absolutely minimal. Exposed structure, just basic finishes, you know, mostly featuring the retail here, but we're not spending any money on. The building so much, it's basically a big shell that can be outfitted in a retail way on the left, upper left. Is an example of an indoor outdoor bar or an operable space, you know, think of this as either the restaurant or the flex space. With in this case, those are overhead doors that can be opened to the outdoor deck. So that if you do have an event, you're not constricted to the hundred people inside the flex space, you can expand. Outside onto that deck and double or potentially triple your capacity for an event up to two to three hundred people. The lower spaces are, think of these as the flex space or potentially even the restaurant, but mainly the flex space. Again, exposed structure, minimal finishes, very low cost space, but outfitted properly, I think can be. Quite nice, very usable. And it's all about the daylight and the views that we're gonna get from that south facing golf course transparency, so that's. That's a big deal for us and Lisa, if you could click to the next slide, please. Now we have one more set of character slides here and then we'll take a look at the site plan. So on the upper left, this is a restaurant example of indoor outdoor expansion. It's very simple to create some operable walls, you know, this is a a common thing and during nice weather. Times, it's very easy to open these and and get quite a bit of, I guess, bang for the buck regarding space, the deck space is extremely inexpensive to build. But very, very usable in summer months. On the upper right is another option for how that outdoor space might be used for an event all on its own. So the flex space could potentially host some sort of event, the outdoor space could at the same time host a separate event, so maximum. Functionality and flexibility of these spaces is key. And then on the bottom left is again an indoor outdoor bar example. So that's one of those, I guess, amenities of a golf course after you're done with the round of golf that you might stop by. And to be able to patronize that from the deck side or from the restaurant side could be a great asset to that restaurant tenant. And also to the patrons and the community. And then on the lower right, similar idea indoor outdoor restaurant space, so operability. And transparency to the outside has been key, so if we can go to the next slide, please, Lisa. So this is how the building fits on the site plan. You can see the building down there and imagine the lower level below where the the more gray area of the blue is, if that makes sense. And the parking lot here holds a hundred and seventeen cars, provides for code required ADA parking. And does use the existing main entry. So people are coming into the site the same way they do now, this design also preserves the existing. Driving range tees and grass tees for the driving range, so they remain untouched. More site development design will occur around the building. In terms of how people get from the parking lot to the front doors of the building, that's coming later. Mainly this is positioning the building and the parking lot on the site to make sure everything fits and begins to work together. So if we could click to one more slide, please. So this is very small for everyone, I suppose, but what this is essentially is a test fit of that design back over the site analysis. So you can see that red circle again in the middle of the drawing, that's right where the pro shop is, so that's your potential for maximum identity. And prominence of this facility, that's where it can be seen from the intersection of Liberty Lake Road. And Country Vista Drive, it's where it can be seen from the entry and from moving north on Liberty Lake Road, so you have an opportunity to create a piece of architecture that. Says something right there about the city of Liberty Lake and this position to take maximum advantage of that. Whatever you'd like to say about the city, that's what the following architecture can do. You can see the green view line and the view arrows and the rotation of the deck and the pro shop. A little bit more than the existing building is to take more advantage of those views and again to catch the ninth hole and the first tee from the pro shop. And then we've remained within that buildable area, not encroached beyond that, meaning. We can build essentially on level ground for the most part, we don't have to move any earth around to build this building. The outdoor event space is just like your current deck is now, it's outside what our. Buildable area yellow line is, but it's suspended out over that, just like the deck is. So we're staying within those limits and then the main entry identity remains the same, so since we've reused the same main entry position. The way that the community and golfers will approach this facility remains unchanged, so we'll design the reception for them. To be as pleasant as we possibly can, we've got some ideas about that that will come later. So next slide, please, if you would, Lisa. So this is the cost estimate, Scott McLaughlin is on the call, Scott, if you would explain where we stand with the cost, that would be great.
Steve, so you've, this is the same format that we've used previously throughout our presentations. We heard what the council was looking for as far as a budget for this scope of work as Steve delineated it early on in the presentation. And we've broken into the elements that he's already talked about in order to give you a sense of how the the dollars would be allocated to the individual spaces. At a bottom line of just over six point four. For the sake of this, I probably should have taken it to even six point four, because I understand that is exactly what your budget is, but as I was working through the cost per square foot. That's where it where it shook out, so. Couple of things to note, last council, there were some questions around contingency and how that would be used and how that would be incorporated. And so these numbers do include a construction contingency. As well as a design and estimating contingency to get us to the final deliverable that would have a GMP associated with it. As well as, as I'd said previously, some escalation for some of the market conditions that we're currently seeing. And then as well as you will see that the soft cost line item, which are those items that are provided or will be paid for directly by. The city of Liberty Lake for things such as furnishings and sales tax and so on and so forth. That has been adjusted to reflect the separation between the poles and netting and the building, so. So with that, with those elements, what we've shown today is we would be designing to the budget you've provided and then we would be working collaboratively moving forward to maintain that all the way to the end. So that. That that's. Not much more to say, I guess I would leave it at that.
That's perfect, thank you Scott and Lisa, if you could click to the next slide, please. Okay, excellent, so. Given all of that, and of course, we can go back to answer any questions that you may have. And my my screen is frozen at this point, so I can't see any of your expressions, but I can see this last slide. So the next steps are really the approval to proceed with this concept. We have at this point adhered to the budget that we were given, we're trying to maximize that for you and give you the best possible building that we can. With everything that's been asked for, so if we achieve some approval to proceed with this design this evening, the next step we'll take is to dive all the way. Into the architecture, the character of the building, the inside and outside look, exactly how it sits on the site, exactly how people will. Circulate around the site and the building and more of the detail of the design. And then at that point, we will bring that back to council and show everybody really what the whole project looks like. With further approval to proceed at that point, we will dive into construction documents and make a constructible, permissible and biddable. Set of drawings at that point. So with that, we're open, definitely open to any questions, Jonathan or Lisa, if you have any further. Comments to close with, otherwise we're ready to answer questions.
And Steve, without without taking up a whole lot of time, I do have a couple finance slides that we've usually kind of tacked on to the end of these. Presentations from Bowton and Architects West, Todd, it's just, it's really short, it's two slides, it's basically the updated scope that the council had requested, the seven point four million. Using one million for the driving range and the six point four for the building. And so I'll just all get into this real quick and then we can start to questions, and so I just wanted to let you know, I did meet with our financial advisors yesterday. And and to. No surprise to anyone, obviously, the the bond market rates are increasing and so that was obviously not not unexpected. And they are forecasted to increase slightly kind of as we head to the through the spring as well, and so as we get this information, we will provide you with any updated. Market rates as we get them, and so what you can see on your screen here is a updated financing scenarios based on putting two million dollars down versus three million dollars down. Kind of as we have heard council indicate. Kind of how much they want to put up front and so. Todd, if you could forward to the next slide, this is the one that we've been going through quite a bit. What is the effect on our real estate excise tax fund as the primary. Account to make these annual payments and so what we see on our screen here in the yellow highlight. Is the five point four million financed over two, over twenty years. And that debt service is three hundred and seventy thousand. And we are including that additional, you know, those additional revenue sources. In this payback model, because that is important for council to understand, you know, when we're paying back this bond. Is first. Any additional revenue generated from golf operations is going directly towards repayment. Of these annual payments and so the rest we've already touched on, obviously, our our refunds are gonna be used to make these payments and then. You know, as we go to finalize our bond sale, we will indicate to them that our general fund will be used as a backup source for any annual payments if necessary. That is not ever going to be the intent, so that's all I had, just an update based on what. What our updated scope was and so we can proceed if Lisa or David, anybody has anything else to add, we can proceed with questions.
I did just want to add one other thing, just just as a fine point in terms of next steps. So we have been doing some research and talking to legal counsel regarding process and what we need to do to move forward with. The driving range and so we will have to do a request for qualifications for the design. And then based upon the design, go out to bid, that's probably gonna be realistically a four to five month. Process if we're super aggressive. And so I did want to let you know that there were some questions about would we know what the cost was for the driving range. Before we got to guaranteed maximum price and the answer is probably not.
All right, if staff or the team doesn't have anything more to add, I will go to council and I have councilmember Baird with her hand up first.
Thank you, Mayor, um, thank you guys for the presentation, I think that's helpful. I do have a question though regarding it, it kind of came up that the building design presented is the shelf, right? So knowing that that doesn't include fixtures for the pro shop or any of that stuff. Where does the funding come for that and what's the approximate cost?
Zoom looks frozen, is it just me?
It looks frozen.
So I can speak to, I I can't tell you what the costs are, but I can tell you that typically the fixturing, which would be your. Your non-fixed things such as tables, chairs, display cases, things of that nature. Would come out of that FFNE budget that I showed that was about one point seven million. Jonathan and his team with OAC, they track those costs closely and they have a process in making sure that those are aligning with. What the needs are for Chris's team. And then we're gonna be factoring that in as we're designing to make sure that, you know, we're accommodating any of the needs that are there, so that's that's typically where it's tracked and I know that Jonathan's team does have that in that FFNE number.
Yeah, we do have a a line item in the budget right now. Right now, we have an allowance of a hundred and fifty thousand, which includes sales tax, so that's what we're carrying right now.
Thank you, that helps.
Next question, sorry, I got kicked out of Zoom for just a minute, so give me a sec while I'm trying to get everybody rearranged, anybody here, Councilmember Van Orman.
Kyle, do we have a, when you say we're gonna be using the revenues, can you go over what revenues we're bringing in, I would assume. That's gonna be. That's going to be the restaurant rent, the. Can you go on?
Yeah, so that would be any revenue from a restaurant lease. Uh. It would be increases in rates uh, that Chris is proposing, you know, a, a certain amount for each. Size bucket of balls, a certain amount uh, per nine holes, uh. A certain amount for season passes, uh, things of that nature, just simple things that don't require any. Uh, I guess any infrastructure to put in place, we are just going to increase these to reflect. An updated, you know, twenty twenty-three cost of, of doing business. And so that's going to reflect a, a pretty substantial increase. Uh, and I believe Chris has uh, some. Uh, he has presented a slide and we can, we can certainly get that to council as well. Uh, about his proposed rate increases for, for twenty twenty-three and what that looks like.
I believe last time it was like a hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Correct, you're exactly right, yeah.
And then uh, as far as for the. Twenty-six hundred square feet per a restaurant, what would that? Technically bring in. For uh, lease payments. Do we, do we know that?
I think we're looking at twenty-five dollars per square foot, Kyle. Was that the right figure?
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Jonathan, that sounds. Low. Do we have a, do we have a range, Jonathan, on what that? On what, what we can expect for. For those uh. Leases to come in now.
Lisa's on mute.
Give me one second. I'm looking for the slide from the prior presentation. Um, it, there is a range. Um, that we're expecting and um, the way it works is that the first. Three to five years, uh, there's a reduction in those rates. Due to um, tenant improvement. So they recruit the cost to their tenant improvements. So we have a reduced rate for year three, it increases four to five, and then it goes to the full rate six, and then increases thereafter. So I do have like a schedule for that, and I'm just, I'm sorry. I can't talk and look for this.
No worries. And then so in addition to that, renting out the event space for various events. Will be a additional source of revenue as well. I know we talked about simulator base, we. Uh, we don't have to include that in any of these presentations if, if we don't uh. Uh, if we don't want to go down that route, uh, but that's all always, that's another option that has been discussed as well, so.
And we had also talked about um. Also putting into the lease agreement for the restaurant, a percentage of their sales.
Correct.
Free standard. So that way, when they're busier, we get more rent when they're on slow periods, maybe in the winter, we won't see as much, but it's easier, it. Makes them, makes it a little bit more, um, a little bit better for their financial cash flows.
Todd, can I share my screen real quick?
Go ahead.
Can y'all see it now?
Yes.
So um. Again. We had some, this was done a little bit uh, earlier on, um, oh, I guess it doesn't show the. The rates. Okay. Oh, yeah, the market lease rate is twenty-five uh, dollars per square foot per year. Um. So there's an adjustment for the TI allowances and you're, and, and there's a schedule that was. Kind of provided to me and how that works and you're um, it's reduced in your one to three, there's an increase in your three to five, um, your six. Um, it is back to twenty-five dollars per square foot. And with a three percent increase for uh, every year after year six. And so, so what we determined was. Um, based upon uh, that our payback is nine point two five years, but if we amortized it at four percent, and that was a pretty uh. Being very conservative, it would take the, the, basically the borrowing cost of money, if we assume four percent. Uh, interest, it would take eleven point five years to, to return, to, to uh. Pay back the amortized uh, return on investment.
Right.
Well, that market lease rate is, you're looking at, you know. Everything else being equal, sixty-five thousand a year at the twenty-five. A dollars per square foot.
And the, the payback and, and ROI is a little, little bit different because we're looking at two hundred and. Uh, where were we, two hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot? So it'll be a little bit more than that.
Yeah.
Right, um. And the other thing is our, even with the increases in bond rates, the uh, amortized ROI is way high.
Yeah, we put the four percent there on purpose because we knew that the rates were going to increase, but I don't think it's going to get to that by the time we close, so.
Right. Okay, um. Any further comments? We haven't heard from councilmembers Foliar, Kurtz or Cargill. Don't all jump at once.
Sure, I'll jump in.
Councilmember Foliar.
Can you hear me all right?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you. Um, so just a, a, first of all, let me just start by saying. Um, I thought this is going to be a tough nut to crack, but that professional team we have on board did a great job. So thank you. This. That's incredible. Um. A couple of questions, uh, the, regarding the flex space interacting with the restaurant. Uh, it, it appears like you're designing it or the intention is to overflow either way. Is that, is that the intent of that space?
Um, Lisa, I'll take this one. If you don't mind, I, I think not entirely. Uh, Councilmember Foliar, I think the intent is mainly for the restaurant. To be able to cater. A flex space event essentially. So not necessarily for the restaurant to expand their seating into the flex space or flex to expand their seating into the restaurant, although that. If the agreement with them worked out well, that could be the case. But for the most part, if you had an event. At the clubhouse that the restaurant was going to cater, all those doors could be opened up and the restaurant would have full control of all that. Uh, that dining business, I suppose you might say, and the people could kind of flow throughout. So. Uh, that would really be the, the optimum case for opening everything up together.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, my next question is about the elevator. Is there, i- is there a strong desire for an elevator for operational use or is a set of stairs just not going to work within the footprint?
Uh, and I'll, I'll answer first, maybe Chris, you might want to speak to this. Um, regarding the elevator, it isn't. Required by code, what is required is that there's an accessible path. To all levels of the building. For the public, for everyone, employees, you know, whoever it's going to be, all humans essentially. Um, the lower level is the challenge, so people have to get down there. We can create and we. We likely will create an accessible path on the site, meaning a long ramp. That will go down one story down to the next. Um, but that's a long way to go if you're in a wheelchair. And if you happen to hire someone to work at the golf course who's in a wheelchair. Um, it's an extreme disadvantage for them to have to do that. We will be providing stairs. You can see those in the floor plan if we went back to that, just to the left of the flex space, there is a set of stairs. So those are available. Our thought was, well, given that this is a city facility, accessibility is paramount. An elevator is going to be safer rather than sorry, so we did design one in. However, if the city decides that the cost is too high. That it's not going to get used enough, it certainly can be taken out and code can be satisfied with uh, rampant stairs.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. I'm, I'm not against that. I'm just, because it, it would allow us to repurpose that if we ever needed to down the road. If you had that uh, elevator option. So and then my last question is, I, I get why you're. Turning the outdoor space to face the view. Um, but I wonder, is it worth the cost versus just lining it up with the building as it is? And anybody that wants to look in that direction maybe has to turn their head just a little bit more. Um, so just throwing that out there.
And, and if I may, a totally fair point, I, I would say that the. The cost is negligible, negligible either way, that uh, deck structure. Will be supported essentially on columns that go to the ground and whether they are rectangular to the building or angled to the building. Uh, won't represent a difference in cost and Scott probably can comment on that as well. Um, but you're right, if the deck was parallel to the building, you know, you could still take in the view. Uh, this way, it does orient it towards that view and it, it expands the area just a little bit, especially if you're going to coordinate off between restaurant and flex. There's a little bit of additional flex space expansion there. Um, a, a little bit less for the restaurant, but it's still there, although the flex space can almost double, given the way that deck is angled. So there are really a couple of reasons for doing that.
Now, at what point do we offer suggestions on that? Is it tonight or is it a later meeting?
Oh, tonight is perfect for the design team. Yes, please.
Well, based on what you just said, my vote would be squared up with the building so you can maximize the use for the flex space or the restaurant. Thank you. That's all my questions for now.
Thank you. Uh, we still haven't heard from councilmembers Kurtz or Cargill. Either one of you have a question? Uh, Councilmember Cargill.
I'll, I'll uh. Chime in here and then Annie can uh, can go last. Um, and she always has, has the best comments anyways. Um, so I have a, a series of, of questions here. Um, first of all, I want to say that. Um, the um, the design here, um, I like where it's going. I like the fact that um, we've tried to fit a square peg into a round hole, so to speak. Um, and um, I just want to thank the, the work that you all did on, on putting together this design and trying to hurt. Seven cats, cats or eight cats on this council to come up with something that, that works. Uh, my questions um, are more directed at Kyle. Uh, in regards to the financing portions, of course. Uh, there's been a lot of talk about this project for a long, long time. And Kyle, I appreciate the numbers that you put up on the screen. Uh, regarding the financing portion, I just want to make sure um. Since you're the city's budget expert, I'm hoping you can answer some of these questions, uh, not only for my sake. And the council's sake, um, but also more importantly, the community's uh, sake as well. So the, the slide that you had about financing. You were talking about the three hundred and seventy thousand over twenty years, and I believe that that was putting two down, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
So the total cost then is going to be about nine point four. Is that accurate?
Uh, so that was the twenty years financing the five point four, so that uh, the total debt service. Would actually be closer with the new interest rates would be seven point four. So it would, it would cost us two million over the course of twenty years to finance the five point four.
Right, so um, the, the total cost would be nine point four. If you included the, the two million.
So you, you're including the two million down and then the full cost of the debt service, yes. So that's correct.
Okay, so nine point four would be over the life of this, that's what the. Okay, um, and I just want to go through a few of these questions, Kyle, and I'm hoping, I'm not meaning to put you on the spot, but I just want clarification. For my, again, myself and, and the community who might be listening. Um, as of right now, what, what is the size of the city's budget if we don't include? The amount of money that we set aside for Trailhead last year?
Uh, so we have a, we adopted a budget uh, for expenditures, I believe, of thirty-two million in twenty twenty-two.
So if we minus.
One of that is, eight million of that was anticipated. Cost of the Trailhead facility.
Right, okay. And uh, if you compare uh, this project to our general fund, we're talking about a, a pretty large amount. Uh, is that? Is that accurate? Somewhere between, I mean, just kind of depends on, on which, which part you're looking at, but overall, it's, it's a good chunk.
So yeah, so I mean, this project is, you know, seven point four, to your point, you know, the full cost. We can say over the course of twenty years is nine point four. Uh, so you know, our, our current general fund balance is right around five million. Uh, that'll go back up once we get some uh, reimbursements from lift and we get uh, you know, our anticipated, you know. Property tax revenue uh. The, the, those chunk payments, you know, in April, May, June.
Right, um, and I appreciate what you said earlier, the, the project will be funded by the real estate excise tax, the REIT. Uh, my follow-up question to that is, where does the REIT come from? For folks who are listening who don't understand, where does the REIT come from?
So real estate excise tax funds are generated through the sale of real property within the city limits of any municipality. And it's one quarter of one percent of the sale price. Gets deposits, so the county collects that and we get a monthly dispersment. Of what those funds are. And so, you know, we anticipate to collect. You know, just north of a million dollars a year in that, and that can fluctuate. And so, you know, we, we had a massive sale back in December, and so we, we had, as a result. And we collected, you know, just over thirty percent of our yearly anticipated revenue in one month.
Right.
And so, you know, we're going to have them, you know, we are. Forecasted to have a much better year than anticipated. Uh, in twenty twenty-two and likely beyond, because you know, Liberty Lake is growing. Both residentially and certainly commercially. And so the city is going to reap the benefits uh, in, you know, the next. Ten, fifteen, twenty, and maybe even by, maybe even beyond uh, in collection of those real estate excise tax funds.
Right, so it's basically real estate transactions in the city.
Correct.
Okay, so, and I appreciate what you said about the fact that it, you know, that there's some fluctuation with that. Um, let's just say for the sake of argument that we have a recession or the real estate market has a, a major correction. The amount of money that we have coming into the REIT could be lower, is that accurate?
Yeah, certainly, you know, anything can happen, you know, um. Yeah, the real estate could trend down, it's, it's not projected to, but to your point, absolutely sometime. You know, the next ten, fifteen years, we could see. You know, we could see an overcorrection maybe at some point, and we could see. You know, we could see less, you know, uh, less funds coming into that account than anticipated. And so there are obviously, you know, there are mechanisms to offset that and, and the city is always going to put its, you know. Put itself in a position to be, you know. Conservative and, and have more than enough. Uh, for situations just like that. And, and Wendy can talk your ear off about that because she went through it ten years ago. And so. Um, and, and so we will, we're in a position to never put ourselves in that scenario. And so, you know, when we're talking about how we want to fund this project. You know. Obviously, yes, yeah, I, I know, I understand where you're getting it. It's an absolute valid point. If REIT dries up, the general fund's going to be used as a backup source. And, and so that's, that's a, that's a valid concern. To bring up a, and, and one that, that bears repeating kind of as we go through this, because you know, if the worst were to happen, then that's, that's the fallback. And so I, I think there are enough mechanisms in place here. Where I don't think that's a realistic outcome based on this project.
Right, and so the, and I don't want to monopolize all the time here, I just have a couple of more questions, Kyle.
Yeah.
Um, that, for the general fund. We get money in the general fund, again, for people who don't know, where does that money come from, from the general fund?
We get a bunch, a bunch of different sources. So uh, uh, property tax, our, our biggest contributor is sales tax. Uh, but we're building permits, we have state shared revenues. Uh, those are kind of your primary drivers of general fund income.
And, and Kyle, when we take out a bond, who's, who's responsible for that? Who's responsible for paying the bond?
The city and the, the citizens of the city. And so, you know, it's a, it's an issued. It's issued by the US government and it's guaranteed by the city. And so, and we have mechanisms in place to ensure that, you know, the general fund's not going to have to absorb that. But, you know, by the letter of, you know, when we close the sale, you know, the, the bond has to get paid back in one form or another, so I.
The bond takes priority, is that accurate?
Absolutely, yeah.
Over, over anything else?
Not necessarily. Um, I mean, I, I don't want to get into what ifs, because there's a million different scenarios that can play out. But um. But obviously, you know, we are, we are obligating future revenues for this project. And so whenever you do that. You always have to make sure that you, I mean, you have to have. You know, you have to be solvent, you have to make sure that you can pay your debts, and so.
Right. Okay, just one final question, then I'll wrap up here. Um, and, and this is just a clarification on, I believe, comments that you've made at several council meetings. If for some reason the worst happens and the REIT doesn't cover it. Um. Either we have to take it out of the general fund, based on what you said earlier, and, and again, correct me if I'm wrong. Or other projects could be set aside to cover that, or perhaps both. Is that?
Correct, yeah. So if, if REIT. Uh, for some reason dries up and we just have a pile of projects on deck. The, the potential for what we would call deferred maintenance. Is a possibility, and so.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Kyle.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Kurtz, we're, we're coming up on time pretty soon, so we'll end with whatever you've got, Councilmember Kurtz, and then we will pick our workshop back up during our seven o'clock.
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. I don't know that I have any questions. I think most of mine were asked by other council members and Mayor Pro Tim Fuller, so. Um, I just want to thank the team for um, the initial design concepts. Um, it's nice to see how the building is going to fit. Um, on the property, um, with the decisions we made at the last meeting. Um, I appreciate seeing kind of what tables and stuff like that might look like to give a real sense to what ninety-nine people or a hundred people in a, in a space would look like. Um, so thank you guys for continuing to listen to the, the questions that we have and follow through and, and get us the information. Um, and continue with the design process. Thank you.
Right, thanks. And, and I want to reiterate a little bit of what Mayor Pro Tim Foliar said, I'm going to get used to saying that. Um, I was kind of nervous coming into tonight's, into tonight's meeting after having missed last week and, and listening to, to the recording, but um. Great presentation, great job pulling things together for the budget you were given. great presentation, great job pulling things together for the budget you were given. You know, and one thing I do want to just reiterate to mostly the public, you know, some people have started to have over the weeks talked about a community centerpiece of this. We've never intended for that flex space to take the place of a community center, it is an event space. So I don't want people to get confused about the intent of being a community space where you can, you know, we're talking more about having, you know, hosting our golf tournaments, hosting maybe a small, small wedding reception, things like that. It certainly is not intended to take, take the place of, of any intended community center or space that we've talked about in the past. So thank you guys for your really hard work, I'm really pleased with, with what we've seen tonight. So it's 10 till, so if, if there's no objections, we'll go ahead and take about a 10 minute break and come back at 7 for our regular meeting. Any objections? Not hearing any, all right, we will reconvene at 7, thanks everybody. Or something. Okay. Alrighty, we are back, just shy of 7 PM. So I want to welcome everybody to our regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. We are holding this meeting remotely and in person here in City Hall. Under Governor Inslee's Washington Ready Plan, members of the public may attend Liberty Lake City Council meetings in person at City Hall at the address provided above or via Zoom at the link below. Members of the public will be allowed to comment in person or via Zoom as described on the last page of this agenda. Per Governor Inslee's Expanded Emergency Order, Proclamation 20-25, reinstituting a statewide mask mandate regardless of vaccination status, all those entering or remaining in City Hall must wear a mask or face covering. Masks are available for the public at City Hall, looking forward to not reading that next meeting. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and we're going to start with the invocation given by Councilmember Baird, and then we'll go right into the Pledge of Allegiance, please join me.
Father, thank you for this day, thank you for the abilities to meet and to conduct city business. Father, I ask for wisdom and discernment as we make decisions tonight. And the Lord, we also pray for the ongoing situation in Ukraine. Lord, protect the citizens of that country and give their leaders wisdom. All these things we ask of your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order, and I will proceed with the roll call here. Councilmember Cargill.
Here.
Councilmember Van Ormond.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Fuller.
Here.
Councilmember Baird.
Here.
All right, and I know Councilmember Dunn is out of her family medical, so do we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Dunn?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, there's a, there's a motion to excuse Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Cargill. Any comments, discussion? Right, not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any, any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously, Councilmember Dunn is excused. Please note, everybody, that we are, we have five councilmembers tonight, so we do have quorum, but for motion to pass, we need three people, just, we're not usually down this many people, so I just want to make sure everybody's up to speed on that, okay. Agenda approval, so do we have a motion to amend the agenda to add a presentation by Spokane Valley Fire Chief Soto and to remove the Code of Ethics Workshop?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Fuller, thank you very much, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Baird. So all those in favor of amending the agenda to add a special presentation by Chief Soto and remove the Code of Ethics Workshop, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, all amended, agenda is amended, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Okay, yeah, most moved by Councilmember Fuller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Baird, any questions, discussion?
Mayor, can I make one quick comment?
Yeah.
Based on the comment that we got at the last meeting and the, the way I felt about it for quite some time, necessarily want to make the motion tonight unless the council wants to as well. But I do think in the future, we should have a discussion about adding public comment, especially when we're going to take action on the resolutions. So I have no problem with this agenda moving forward, I just would like us to have a conversation in the future about adding some public comment.
We, it's already, it's already in the rules of procedure, we take public comment for resolutions and ordinances.
Okay, very good, even though that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, it's just part of that section.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem, all right, so do we have all, all in favor of approving the amended agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved as amended, now we are at citizen comments. So if you would like to provide oral public comments during the council meeting, you may do so in person at City Hall or virtually via Zoom. If you wish to speak in person, please fill out a yellow request to speak form there on the table over on the left. If you wish, wish to speak via Zoom, please join the Zoom meeting using the meeting information in the agenda, and that, and please send a chat to the meeting host and he will notify me of your comment. Just remember you have three minutes, there will be a timer posted here in City Hall and on the Zoom meeting. And just, this is truly a citizen comment period, there's no back and forth. However, if there is an action item or a question that we need to get back to you on, we will make sure we have your contact information and we will get you an answer in the following days. So we do have a couple people here in chambers, Marjorie Fret, if you'd like to join us at the podium here, looks like you are, would like to make a comment on the Trailhead workshop, welcome and thanks for coming.
Thank you. Mask on or off?
Preferably on, we can hear you.
All right, so good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Marjorie Fret. I am a City of Liberty Lake homeowner and treasurer of the Ladies' Trailhead Nine Hole Golf Club. I'm encouraged by the project process I saw tonight, and I'm aware of your fiduciary responsibility to the city. But I want to remind you that you also have commitments to the citizens that use this resource that you're discussing. When I retired, I looked for a sport that I could play locally, progress from duffer to competent and play for many years to come. I specifically joined the Trailhead Ladies' Nine Hole Golf League because the course welcomes beginners but also challenges those with experience. Each Wednesday morning from April 1st through the end of September, I join 60 other women who drive past Liberty Lake, Meadowwood, Esmeralda, and many other courses to golf here at Trailhead. Once per month, we have a member meeting and we gather at a local restaurant for lunch. Are you aware that each year more than 90 women participate in our invitational? These ladies come from Shawila, Coeur d'Alene Metro, Wandermere, Downriver, and others to play trailhead. We squeeze into the current room, which I'm sure you're well aware of, and we also share the two women's restroom stalls. We cater food from local restaurants, we buy prizes from local merchants, and show off the community of Liberty Lake. In addition to a well-maintained course, our league requires those 40 golf carts we show in, being stored in the basement, a pro shop, and more importantly, an experienced staff, a driving range, and that flexible meeting space you described. I understand supporting many city, city services that I don't use, such as the Central Valley Schools, Baseball Diamonds, and the skate park I drove by tonight, although I have no children, and a library, although I get my books on Kindle. But tonight, I'm asking you to continue your support for the sport that I and the other 90-plus women from the Liberty Lake and surrounding area love, and we hope to play for many, many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, appreciate it. Okay, and now we have Brian Asmus. Okay, and now we have Brian Asmus, Fire Commissioner. Good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Good evening, Mayor Kaminski, members of the council. Tonight, I'm here, I'm a resident of Liberty Lake, but here representing Spokane Valley Fire Department as one of your fire commissioners. So before you, I placed the Spokane Valley Fire Department annual report for 2021 that goes briefly over our calls for service, highlights the accomplishments of the department, and some of the challenges that we've been facing. Those that are not present here tonight, I will make sure that you have one of these in your boxes, in your mailboxes here at City Hall. Last night, at our fire commissioners meeting, we swore in your new fire chief, Frank Soto Jr., and you'll be hearing from him tonight later on the agenda. And so we are very proud of his leadership and are excited for the leadership and service that he's going to bring to all the communities the Valley Fire Department does serve. So I'm not going to steal his thunder, but we are all excited for him. And lastly, I would just like to say that, like the city council, the fire commissioners are now meeting back in person, and so we meet the second and fourth Monday at Spokane Valley Fire Department District Headquarters off of Montgomery. So happy to answer any questions if you have them. Other than that, appreciate being able to be here in front of you tonight and represent the fire department.
Appreciate you coming. Does anyone have any questions for Commissioner Asmus? I don't see any.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I think those are all the yellow forms I have for in-person. Todd, have we received anything in chat from anyone wanting to comment remotely? Okay, alright. Just remember, we will have another opportunity near the end of the meeting, and as we discussed before, any resolutions and so we are to announcements, proclamations, and special presentations.
Mayor Kaminski, I do have one written comment that I'd like to acknowledge also.
Thank you. I always forget that, Kelsey. Thanks for keeping me straight.
Yeah, of course. And we received written comment from Greg Cronin, a city resident on the topic of Trailhead. He also shared those comments directly with the mayor and council.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Alright, so I guess we will move into Hooray for Hub Day. Before we read the proclamation, Phil's here from the hub. I don't know if you wanted to give a little background.
Good evening, Phil Champlin, Executive Director at the Hub Sports Center. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit here in the city of Liberty Lake, and our purpose is to provide events of a positive impact on youth and community. And we've really appreciated the support we receive from council and from the city staff and to be able to provide a wonderful place for residents to come and play and learn those life lessons. You learn through client participation. And so last week on Wednesday, we welcomed our two-millionth person through the doors, and so I've got Bailey and her father Bart here, and so Bailey was our two-millionth person, and just had a wonderful grin on her face and seemed to be pretty excited about that. So really glad that you guys could join us here tonight as well. So thank you.
Yeah, so I've got a question. So I remember when we did the million.
Yes.
Do you, about how long did we take, do you take to get to a million? And then I'm sure it was a much shorter time to get to two.
Yeah, so I, if I remember right, I think that was 2014. We were on pace to get to the two-million mark in 2021. Obviously, there was something that happened in there. I can't remember what it was.
We'd all like to forget that, right?
But, but super excited to get there last week and thrilled to have Bailey be that, be that person for us, and she plays with one of the local volleyball clubs and happened to come to practice that night. So that was good stuff.
Great. Thank you very much. So we do have a proclamation to read, and thanks for joining us tonight. So we're going to go ahead and have Kelsey, our city clerk, read the proclamation, and then we'll get you, you know, a copy of it to, to take over.
So we have a proclamation of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, recognizing February 23rd, 2022 as Hooray for Hub Day. Whereas the City of Liberty Lake hereby recognizes the Hub Sports Center as the largest sports facility in the area, and whereas Hub Sports Center provides opportunities for youth and families to learn valuable life lessons through play and participation with outreach programs like Hub 360 After School, Police Activities League, and Family Fun Festival. And whereas Hub Sports Center excels at providing the highest caliber facilities for sports practices, games, and tournaments, along with weekly exercise sessions. And whereas in recognition, recognition of the two-millionth visitor to Liberty Lake's own Hub Sports Center, we recognize Bailey Hillman as the two-millionth visitor to Liberty Lake's favorite sports, sports complex. Now therefore.
Oh, I'll take that. Now therefore, I, Chris Kaminski, mayor of the City of Liberty Lake, do hereby proclaim February 23rd, 2022 as Hooray for Hub Day in this, in the City of Liberty Lake in support of the Hub Sports Center. So congratulations. We, I don't have a copy to sign, but we will get one, we'll get a copy for the hub and one for you, Bailey. Sound good? Thanks for joining us, and thanks for sticking with the hub. They've been a great asset to the community. Alright, thank you.
Total fist bump.
Yes. Oh, yes, I always, I forgot that part. Just, just housekeeping. I forgot to ask for a vote of support for this proclamation, which do we, do we have a motion to support our Hooray for Hub Day proclamation?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Motion by, by Councilmember Cargill and seconded by Councilmember Van Ormond. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. But motion, motion passes. I was just so excited. I forgot that part. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, so moving on, we have, we've, we added since the initial distribution of our agenda, a presentation by Flock Camera Safety. Flock Safety Cameras, and Chief Simmons is here to introduce the team. This is, you know what, chief, I'm not going to steal your thunder. If you want to give a quick introduction as to why we're with this, and then we can go into the presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, and citizens of Liberty Lake. Todd is, Todd, present, he can load my few slides that I have here before I turn it over to Mac and Josh from Flock Safety. Maybe I'm not seeing it. Is it up yet there?
Not yet.
There it is.
There, okay, there we go. Okay, next, you can transition from that slide there, Todd. Thank you. So I'm very excited to present to you the short presentation along with Matt Larkin and Josh Thomas from Flock Safety. Now, we here at the Liberty Lake Police Department, and our mayor, director Lisa Key, and crew lead Trevor Reagan, and multiple other law enforcement leaders in our area have been working diligently and in conjunction with each other to find a way to improve technology and our crime prevention and deterrence efforts. Now, tonight, I want to inform you of a multi-agency project using technology to do, to do just that. Next slide, Todd. I think, did you skip one, Todd? Did you go back one? Okay, yeah, let's get one. There we go. I'm sorry about that. Now, 2020 marked a year of exponential increases in crime in our city. I mean, as you can see here, aggravated assaults were up 100%. Theft offenses were up quite a bit, and so forth and so on. So looking at these stats, and these, these statistics come from the Uniform Crime Report, so their official end-of-the-year stats taken by the FBI in regards to crime in our city. And if you're interested, I can get members of the council, the overall report for the state of Washington, which includes all data for Liberty Lake. I can get that to you sometime this week. I just have to download it from Waspic if you're interested. So let me know. But here are those increases in the 2020, for 2020. Next slide, Todd. Now, currently, we're in the initial stages of joining the Spokane County Sheriff's Office in a multi, multiple-agency integrated exploratory effort to use license plate recognition tech, technology to deter and solve crime in our city. Also, there's the potential of several other cities to join this effort, such as Airway Heights, Cowellville Tribal Police Department, Spokane Tribal Police Department, and also the city of Post Falls crossing the border. Next slide. Am I frozen? Now, from a public safety standpoint, we'd rather deter crimes and see them occur. And technology allows us to do that. Technology such as LPR, or license plate recognition technology. It's great for things like officer safety, gives us alerts to dangerous situations, vehicles and drivers that are wanted, and it also allows for some victim senator assistance such as locating missing persons and abducted persons. Now, I don't want to take Mac and Josh's thunder, so I'm not going to get too much into that, but just a little overview from what I've experienced in my career with systems like the BOSS system. Next slide, Todd. Oh, no, keep it right there. I'm sorry. Now, it goes without saying that individuals who commit crimes often use vehicles, and the commission is such. Recently, we've had a plethora of crimes and examples of unknown suspect vehicles where we have images such as the ones that you see up here. The top image of the white vehicle with the date and timestamp on it is from a robbery at one of our local businesses. The list of numbers there you see are what we call incident numbers, or the numbers that are generated every time a report is taken of an incident. All of those incidents were from one vehicle, and that's not all of them. I just put what I can put up there on the screen. And another crime that was created, committed in our city from, and where we had a suspect vehicle, an image, but no information to go with that image. All we had is an image. So it's extremely difficult to follow up on on these cases when all we have is an image and no information on the vehicle or the registered owners. Next slide, Todd. So after doing months of research and communicating with local law enforcement leaders in our area and meeting with Mac Larson from Flock Safety, we are joining this multiple, multiple, multiple-agency exploratory effort to see how such technology can assist us with our crime prevention and efforts, and also solving crimes that occur in our city. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mac Larkin and Josh Thomas from Flock Safety, and they have a short, quick overview of LPR technology, Flock Safety, and the capabilities of how we can safely use that tool and integrate that tool in our crime prevention efforts.
Thank you, Chief Simmons. Appreciate the opportunity. This is Josh Thomas speaking. Is it possible that I can share my screen so that I can walk through a couple slides? Perfect. Let me know if you can see this, okay?
Can.
Cool, I see, I see Annie giving me a thumbs up, so I appreciate that. Um, so our mission as a company at Flock Safety is to eliminate crime. And we, it's simple in words, but it's hard to actually do in practice. Now, here's what we say why we do this. Because we believe it takes the entire community working together, takes all of us, private citizens, public, democratically elected governing bodies, law enforcement, technology people, good policies. We all need to work together, and if we do this, we do believe it's possible to actually bring our crime rates down in our cities, because we're seeing this happen. See, it happened every single day. The technology that Chief Simmons is talking about, it isn't new. We are, have customers in fifteen hundred cities across the country, and law enforcement are reporting to us that they're solving upwards of five hundred crimes every single day with this same exact technology. The pictures that you saw a second ago of those suspect vehicles, those types of incidents are being solved with this technology, because we're able to help law enforcement identify exactly which car that is. Get the license plate, and then go out and stop the suspects and go make the arrest. Here's what people don't often know. The majority of crimes actually involve a vehicle. There have been studies on this that have been done that have shown that seventy percent of crime involves a vehicle, meaning that people drive into an area, commit crime, and drive out. So because of that, there's something that we can do about the unsolved crime problem. We can give police better evidence, license plates, suspect vehicles, not people, but the suspect vehicles, to help them identify those leads and go investigate and solve crime. License plates are a critical piece of evidence that police need to go start an investigation. And then we believe, because we see this happen, that with good policies and oversight, when we engage the public, we actually can do this safely, effectively, and protect our civil liberties. And I wanted to get into that today a little bit also. But before we do that, this is what it actually looks like. That little weird football-shaped black device there, that's a camera. The very first version of our technology was actually a modified Android cellphone. Today, it looks a little bit different, but you can see kind of like the reminiscence of what that used to be. That picture of the car, that's an actual picture taken from the device. It takes a picture of the back of a car. And from that, we use machine learning, which is basically just training the camera to identify what it sees in the frame. It'll make out the plate, the state of the plate, which is an important detail, mind you, because a Washington plate could have the same characters, letters and numbers as a California plate or an Idaho plate. So it's important to distinguish the state of that plate as well. It'll also make out the, the make of the car, the color, the type of vehicle, the last time seen. So then example that Chief Simmons showed a second ago, you saw a white vehicle, and you knew the timeframe. In that instance, you could literally in our system type in white car, the timeframe, and get any suspect vehicle that was there during that timeframe. Find the one that fits the description, get the license plate, give it to an investigator so that she can go out and investigate that crime. What you do get with Flock are the objective, real-time investigative leads. These are vehicle details and license plates. It is indiscriminate evidence from a fixed location of where the camera is. It's not people. It's not facial recognition. It's not traffic enforcement. This is about helping police solve crime within an ethical manner. So how does it actually work? Well, on the front end of it, we have what's called the proactive way to do this, and that is, in real time, we run those license plates against the national database that's curated by the FBI of wanted and stolen cars. So that if it's a stolen vehicle that drives through Liberty Lake, your law enforcement will know about it. They can go dispatch and go make the arrest. Moreover, that's really important, because we have an integration with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. That's the organization that powers Amber Alerts. So when we all get text messages on our phones about an Amber Alert, we have an integration with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. Those license plates get sent to our cameras. If that car drives by any Flock Safety camera anywhere in the country, we will send that alert to local law enforcement. They can go dispatch and go recover that kidnapped child. It also can happen investigatively. So if an eyewitness were to see a crime that occurred, and think about that, if you're the eyewitness to a crime, you're probably not trained as a detective to understand that you need to see the license plate, understand the character, the state, and all of those details. But you may know that it was a yellow truck with a, with a roof rack. And so you can tell police, hey, there was a yellow truck involved in this incident that had a roof rack. And then Chief Simmons or someone on his team can literally go into the Flock Safety system and type in yellow, truck, roof rack, and similar to like an Amazon search, find exactly what they're looking for, get that specific suspect vehicle, get the license plate, and then go solve the crime. And as Chief Simmons mentioned earlier, the most important thing we can do is actually deter crime. There's been a lot of primary research that shows if you can clear cases very quickly, meaning you can stop crime very quickly, and then you tell people, don't commit crime here, or you will be caught. That's how you deter crime the best. People know that they will be caught. It's not about punishment. It's about knowing you cannot commit crime. The opportunity will not be there. So just really high level, what is the tech? It's license plate recognition, meaning the cameras can identify the license plate of a car. It gathers the objective evidence and the facts about vehicles, not about humans or people. In fact, we don't take a picture of the driver or the occupants of the vehicle. We don't know who's in the car. We just are giving police that investigative lead about that specific suspect vehicle. We can alert police of wanted stolen cars, Amber Alerts, Silver Alerts. This is used to solve crime. It's not used for traffic enforcement. And by nature, we have designed our product to adhere to all state and local laws. Now, just importantly, as what the technology is, is what it isn't. It is not facial recognition technology. We don't have that. We don't use it. We never will. It's not tied to personally identifiable information. Again, we don't know who the driver is. It's not connected to the DMV or the records of the car. It's just giving the license plate to police. It's not used for immigration or traffic enforcement. And lastly, to ensure privacy, we actually delete the data every thirty days on a rolling basis. Meaning, there's thirty days of storage of these license plates. If you go back thirty-one days, you can't see anything. Doesn't, the, the data doesn't exist. It's permanently deleted from our systems. It's unrecoverable. And that is to protect privacy by design. Moreover, here's a slide that we have dedicated just to talk about privacy. I know this is, tends to be one of those concerns that we all have. In fact, before I started working for Flock, this was my primary concern, is how, what are we doing to ensure our civil liberties? And first and foremost, the footage, it's 100% owned by the agency or the city, meaning we don't own it as the company at Flock. We don't have access to it. We don't share it with third parties. We don't sell it. It's 100% for law enforcement to use to solve crime. If it's not used in that purpose, it's permanently deleted. Again, the thirty-day retention period. And that short retention period is again, to ensure And that short retention period is again, to ensure that this data is not, we're not creating a big database here. It is automatically deleted. And another thing to just hit the point on, this actually helps mitigate human biases. We're all human and we all have bias. Footage does not. The data does not. It'll just tell you specifically about a license plate or a vehicle. Give that to the officer. No more do you have to worry about, is an officer going off of their gut here? Does something look suspicious? No, they will know objectively, this is a stolen car. It helps your officers be more efficient and more effective. It helps mitigate our human biases. Also, the human biases that come from eyewitnesses. That's the number one reason why the Innocence Project says that wrongful convictions are overturned is because eyewitnesses got something wrong. We can actually remove that from the situation by giving police better objective evidence. On the right is all of what it doesn't do. Again, all the footage is stored securely in Amazon Web Services, the government cloud. It's the highest end encryption that there is on the market. For anyone who's a technical wonk out there, it's AES two-five-six encryption, which is the highest security level encryption that there is. There is no public IP address on the devices themselves, meaning you can't access them remotely to try to hack a device. It's just not possible. In order to actually, for an officer to search the system, to actually find evidence, they have to enter a valid search reason. You saw Chief Simmons share an example of what one of those codes might be, right? That long string of numbers. They would literally need to enter in their reason or a case number why they're searching the system. And everything in our system is one hundred percent auditable, meaning every search is saved. We won't know what the footage looks like, but you'll know. Chief Simmons searched at this date and time for these search parameters, and here was his search reason. Not facial recognition, not traffic enforcement, no PII. That's the personal identifiable information. It's not predictive policing, which is an important distinction. There are laws on the books in the state of Washington against predictive policing. We do not do that. This is about solving a crime as it's occurring or after it has occurred. Again, it's not connected to registration data or third-party databases. And we've created a transparency portal, meaning there's a website that will live that can show you exactly how the data is being used and who has access to it. In fact, here's an example of that. This is what it really looks like. It might be a little bit small for you to see on the screen, but in it, and I can share a copy of this so that you can have this to see what it looks like. But it'll show you what type of data is collected, what's not being collected. What are the acceptable uses? What are the unacceptable uses? And a link to the full policy that Chief Simmons has been putting together to show you exactly how his officers will conduct business in Liberty Lake. Lastly, I just want to end on a couple of stories. This technology is not only safe and effective, but it works really quickly to help solve crimes that otherwise could have gone unsolved. This is a real story that happened in, outside of Atlanta, Georgia, a place called Shambly, Georgia. It's a suburb of Atlanta. Just after noon, an Amber Alert was issued because unfortunately, this one-year-old boy over here on the left, his name is Mateo. He was kidnapped. It was a stranger-on-stranger abduction. And I'm sure Chief Simmons can share more details about these types of incidents, but unfortunately, stranger-and-stranger abductions are typically ended in really bad outcomes. In this scenario, there was an officer who knew how to use the system really well, conducted a search on our system because it was a maroon SUV. And it had aftermarket wheels. He was able to use those factors to find that suspect vehicle. Now, in this case, the kidnappers had actually taken off the license plate of the car. But our technology took a picture of that car, and they were able to find that exact same suspect vehicle hours earlier before they had removed the license plate. And they found that car, and they were able to go make the felony stop, make the arrest, and they reunited this one-year-old boy with his mom within six hours. Kind of an unprecedented story, and we've actually been able to help law enforcement solve two dozen Amber Alerts in the five years we've been around as a business. I just want to highlight a couple more really quick stories. This is a suburb of Chicago. There was a bunch of gun violence that had been increasing there in this town called Rantool. Within the first couple of weeks of deploying this technology, the police department was able to make the arrest of a couple suspects who were wanted at the Fourth of July. They had fired off a bunch of weapons and injured children in the process. They were able to actually stop those individuals and make the arrest and bring resolution to those families. In Venetia, California, this is in the Bay Area, San Francisco Bay Area, a stolen car sent an alert to law enforcement saying this car just entered our town. They were able to stop that person and make the arrest. In that car, they found eleven illegal weapons and burglary tools. Don't know what this person was planning on doing or if they were just going to sell this. I hope that's what the case was going to be. Needless to say, they were able to stop this person, make the arrest and get illegal weapons off the street. It's not just about individual anecdotes, though. We are actually seeing crime rates drop in cities around the country. San Marino, California has seen a seventy percent decrease in residential burglaries, a nearly twenty percent decrease in part-one crimes. Part-one crimes are your violent offenses. And a thirty-six percent requested increase in cameras, meaning the community has said, I want this technology. San Marino is also a predominantly Asian-American community, and we've all seen what happened in California in particular, around some of the increasing of the API violence that has happened. The, the, some of those hate crimes that have been occurring. This community has seen crime rates dropping in a place where we have seen crime increasing. And the chief and the city council and the community attribute that crime decrease to this technology. That's all that I wanted to share about tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I did just want to say that we are incredibly proud to be able to present to you tonight. Thank you, Mayor, Council and members for letting us do this. I appreciate you all, and thank you very much.
Thank you. So before we do take any questions, I was wondering, you know, we had a, you know, great meeting a month or so ago, and I appreciate you guys spending the time and letting me learn about this. So for the council, what we're looking at doing is a free six-month trial with this technology. And then to come back to the council about month five or so with the data. It is a, Mac or Josh, jump in if I'm getting any of this wrong. It's all by memory. It's a service. There's an initial, I think it's two hundred and fifty dollars per camera. Once we get into a contract for installation, but after that, unless it's changed, it's twenty-five hundred dollars per camera per year. So we're not buying the equipment. We're not having to maintain the equipment. We're not having to maintain software. It's a service. So with the intent of this six-month free trial, you know, gathering the data, see how effective it is, where we might, you know, how many cameras we might need, where they might be effective, and then, like I said, come back to council five months or so in with the request. Hopefully, if the data, obviously, if the data supports it, the request to enter into a contract. So Chief, Josh, Mac, did I get that at a high level pretty much right?
Yeah, I think it's a sixty-day trial, but
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's a sixty-day trial, and after the first thirty days, we want to collect the data, present the data after the first thirty days, as well as evaluate the effectiveness, effectiveness, excuse me, of the LPR. And if it is a tool that is effective in crime prevention and our public safety efforts, I will then ask the council for approval to purchase our first yearly plan of the camera. Now, a couple of more things. This system is, is fully integratable with the BOSS system, so that's the existing LPR technology that, that is like at the state line and some other places throughout our county and Cootie County. Another thing is every officer will have access to this. Every officer. It's not something that we have to wait for information to come from SREC or our dispatch for. Every officer will have technology via a web-based app to use this. So that is a tremendous asset for, for, you know, every shift, every officer, not to have to wait on that lag time to get information and act. One of the issues I know with the BOSS system is by the time we in the field get that information, there's, time has passed and those vehicles are miles upon miles down the road. So that's, this is a great thing with, with, with Flock. And finally, with this being a multi-agency effort, we'll be able to share information. We'll have access to each other's information. Of course, we bordered the valley. We bordered unincorporated districts of the county. And with those cameras lying just outside the city, we'll also know when those alerts are coming through. So we'll get a head start on maybe some of these, you know, missing persons, the Amber Alerts, the Silver Alerts, the wanted suspects, the stolen vehicles, the vehicles, the felony vehicles, the vehicles of interest. I mean, there's so many things that, that we in law enforcement get out of, from vehicle, people driving vehicles, that, you know, to get that head start would just be, it would be amazing. I mean, I think it'll benefit, again, our crime prevention efforts and also our ability to solve crimes that occur within the city.
I know, Chief, you had a really good example that happened right before we had our meeting with the Flock Safety team. The suspect car had gone through Spokane County, I think, to Cootie County. And if you're on par with me on the story, if you could relate a little bit about how this could have helped find that car sooner.
I can't, I can't remember that specific example, but honestly, there's examples daily. You know, we get what they call BOLO information. And that BOLO information is information from another agency in regards to a suspect vehicle in a crime. They come through multiple times a day, for sometimes for, for serious crimes around the county. I know, was it last summer, we in Liberty Lake apprehended two separate homicides. We just happened to luck up on them. If we had this, the information on the vehicles, we would have known immediately when they entered the city. So those are just a few examples of how this could be a tremendous tool for us and get us information when we need it, and we won't have to rely on, you know, some of the, the, the things that we have to do to, to, to stay within case law and also within state law to, to stop vehicles and to make arrests when we have reasonable suspicion or just a hunch. We kind of eliminate that. We know based upon a hit from NCIS, which Josh was mentioning, which is the national system that, that either someone's wanted, it's a wanted vehicle, it's a felony vehicle, it's a vehicle wanting a connection with a crime, a particular crime, whether it's a homicide, a kidnapping, et cetera. So, you know, it just, it just takes away some of that guesswork and some of the potential, you know, civil liability of, of, of maybe stretching things a little bit because you know something's wrong, but you don't have what we need, you know, as far as case law and state law to make a stop on a vehicle. So it eliminates those biases and maybe sometime, some of that guesswork that creates bad case law.
Right. And we do have in, in the capital facilities plans, some money for, for this year that has been earmarked for cameras. And we also have the fifty thousand dollar donation from Redeem to the PD for, for things like this. So funding is planned for. I think I figured it up. If my numbers were right, you know, the fifty thousand dollar donation, for example, would, you know, would pay for twenty cameras for a year. I don't even know if we need twenty cameras. That's part of what would need to be worked out, but I'd love to have, you know, hear any questions from the council. You know, if there's anything you want to ask, but you know, we would, we're planning on moving forward with the trial and then coming back with the data. Councilmember Cargo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Chief, and thank you, Josh, for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. One, my question is how many cameras are we talking about here? But it sounds like we don't know the answer to that yet. Is that right?
No, we have, we have the, actually, the locations almost completely finalized. I can get you that map tomorrow. I'll, actually, I can email you this presentation or Flock's presentation, so you have this information. And also, right now, where we're, we're planning on placing those cameras. Now, we're a unique city, and this wasn't mentioned. We're a unique city. There's only so many ways in and out of our city. So we're in a great position to use these cameras to do just what we talked about for that particular reason. And so, yeah, I can get that to all of the council members tomorrow, so you'll have a map and the location of, of where we're planning on placing those cameras. And thank Trevor and Lisa for doing the work to, to kind of, you know, help assist in, in figuring out, you know, where we can place these cameras legally.
Chief, just for the citizens' awareness, can you give us a rough ballpark of how many we're talking about?
I believe there was twenty, twenty or twenty-five.
Chief, I can speak to this. Right, right now, we have nineteen that we are, are looking to deploy for the, the pilot, which is, you know, based on data we collected from some, you know, consultants that we have on our team who have been doing this in other areas, information from Chief Simmons and his team, as well as, as Chief said, a few folks from the Public Works Office there in Liberty Lake.
Great, thank you. A couple more questions here. Can you, can you help me? I'm trying to understand if a camera, if, if somebody calls in and says, hey, I was down at the grocery store and there was a white truck that, that shot some bullets into the parking lot or whatever. You know, it's, it's a white truck that is the suspect. How do you go back to the camera and differentiate between all the white trucks that are there? Or do you not? And then do you go and basically try to track down every white truck in the city?
Well, you're not talking about every white truck in the city. You'll have a particular timeframe. So you know, through your interviews that, for instance, the shots were heard or witnesses observed the shots at twelve-twenty-five. And at approximately twelve-twenty-seven, they observed the vehicle eastbound on, on country or Alpo Way, for instance. So you can, you can, and Josh and, and Mac can correct me, but you're looking at a particular timeframe, and often you're looking at a particular camera or a set of particular cameras where potentially your suspect left. And you can widen that search if it doesn't yield the information that, that you're looking for. This is cameras or no cameras. This is something that we deal with anyways. You get a suspect script, you may get a partial plate. You start running partial plates on a yellow Dodge Neon. You have six yellow Dodge Neons. Now, it's just a process of elimination. So it's not anything different than we've done in the past. When you get a partial plate or a description of a vehicle, and you just use the process of elimination to attempt to find your suspect.
Sure. I, I was just thinking about it from the perspective of, you know, someone, let's say, just someone's minding their own business, and they also have a white truck, and they're also parked in the parking lot or driving by at the same time. I guess, how do you, how do you distinguish between, you know, the two?
Now, I think, I think what you're looking at is immediate information, which, again, is no different than what we do now. If we have the information and we have the license plate, and we have solid information on the suspect vehicle, we'll attempt to make that stop. Going back to what I hope we can do as far as cherry stops and things like that, that's a different thing, and I don't want to get in that. We're getting out into the weeds on that one, but, you know, what you're talking about, I think, is, is thinking about what you're talking about is doing follow-up investigations. And those follow-up investigations aren't immediate. That's something that we'll give to an investigator, and they can start that process of elimination, start contacting people, start looking at records to see if the registered owners match the description of the suspects, et cetera. So, and I just, I don't want to play the what-if game because we're, we're kind of beginning to play the, the one million what-ifs that can happen in an incident, but, and not to get too far down in the weeds, but, you know, I think, you know, you'll have, the officers will have to determine whether there needs to be a follow-up investigation or they can act on tips or information from the system and make an immediate stop on the suspect vehicle, if that answers your question.
Yeah, yes, thank you. And Josh, just, just one more quick question. You, I think you put on the second or third slide about the number, basically, this allowing for a number of increased cases or increased solved cases in all these different cities. Was that, was that right? I guess my question for the chief is, do you have enough manpower to, to do that? If you've, if you've got all these new cases that are going to start bubbling up because of this, do you have what you need to, to track those down?
I, I believe we do, and we have to. We don't have a choice. We, I mean, it's, the public safety is our thing. That's, that's our pledge to the city, is to serve the city. We just promoted another detective today. Congratulations to Detective, newly promoted Detective Matt McKay. And we also have the, the fortune of having a just hired Jordan Rippey, who was a detective with the State Patrol, who will also use in, in investigations as well. So technically, we have three experienced investigators, detectives on our team, two in the official capacity and one that has ten years of experience. So I, I think we'll be able to, and hopefully, this will deter enough crime where after a while, we'll see that dramatic drop in crime, and we won't have to worry about that. And that's our goal.
Okay, great. Councilmember Baird, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. A great presentation. Thank you for that. I look forward to the results of the trial. My question is, do we have any local jurisdictions, either in Spokane County or Cootie, that currently utilize Flock?
No, not at this time. Again, this is a multi-agency exploratory, kind of a dual effort to test this technology, to get the data and to see if it would be effective. Looking at the data. Looking at the data that, that Mac and Josh have, have supplied to me from cities across the nation, the success stories, I, I have no doubt that it will be useful based on that information. But no one currently uses this technology. But again, based on the information that we see, based on the data, based on the success stories, you have multiple, multiple agencies in, in Spokane County and in Kootenay County who are exploring this, this, this technology to, to assist with efforts again.
Thank you. So we might be pioneers. Thank you.
And to, to add in there, Chief, Spokane County Sheriff's Office, they came aboard, they're about a month ahead of, of Liberty Lake. So they will be working towards install with their cameras here shortly. So we'll be producing some, some local results. As Chief said, airway heights, the, the tribal PDs and post falls have all indicated wanting to, to kind of go on the same path there as well.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? All right. Thank you so much for being here for the presentation. We will keep the council apprised of next steps. And Chief, you said you'll get the, the map of cameras out tomorrow and we'll get going and bring you guys back some data to make a decision. All right. Thank you. All right. So moving on to our next presentation. Chief Soto, Frank Soto Jr., our new Spokane Valley Fire Chief is joining us via Zoom. This is his first day on the job. As Commissioner Asma said earlier, he took his oath of office last night. So welcome, Chief, to our meeting and hopefully soon you'll be able to join us in person. And I understand we're going to make this a regular thing about once a month for, for you to join us. So thank you so much for that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Today is my first day on the job. I've been with the Valley Fire Department now for just over a year and I'm very happy for the opportunity. And, you know, I, I want this to be a, a regular meeting. I want to be a part of, obviously the City of Liberty Lake is part of our response area. And I want us to, to get back involved. I want to be able to share the numbers, the, the responses and, and just the direction of the department in regards to the City of Liberty Lake. So I'm, I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to be involved. So thank you.
Thank you. I didn't know if you had anything. I know when I talked to Julie this morning, she said you might have some, some, you know, data or something you might want to share, but I didn't know if you were at that point yet.
I do have some numbers in regards to responses for the month of February. I did send those to Mr. Todd with also a heat map if he is able to put the heat map up.
Yep, he is working on it.
Excellent. So right now, what, what we are presenting, it, it's good data. It's not too flashy. I do want to kind of make it, I don't want to say more flashy, but I'd like to just make it more easier, easier to read, easier to explain. As soon as he pops that up, I'll be able to explain the why.
Thanks for your patience while we get this on the screen. Here it comes, I think. Oh, hold on. It, it's not, he doesn't have it. Do you, do you happen to have it in front of you, Chief? We can let you share your screen.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Todd, can you make that switch?
All right. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Excellent. I'm going to zoom in just for a second. Zoom in here. Oh, maybe not that much. So this is a heat map of our response area here in Liberty Lake. And I just want to be able to show you where the bulk of your calls are, or our calls are within the city limits. The heat maps, the bigger circle, red circles are where the bulk of the calls are for right now. And they don't quite decipher what calls or what, and that's, that's some of the things we're going to work on. So we'll be able to better explain that and show you where the specific areas of those calls are and what they are. So I can tell you, we had a total of 140 emergency calls in the City of Liberty Lake for the month of February. Eighty-three percent of those calls were EMS in nature, which was 116 calls. We also had additional fire alarm calls, motor vehicle collisions, fires, hazardous materials calls, cancel calls and technical rescue calls. Overall, we're, we're down about 14% from last month's call volume. And our EMS call volume for the year to date is roughly 84%. So I think that, you know, that, that's a right of line with our, our yearly annual report of call volume in regards to EMS calls. But overall, I would say I'm, I'm very happy with our, with our, with our response times and with our ability to take care of cardiac arrest and cardiac issue calls, which we are doing really well with, especially in the area of Liberty Lake.
Great. All right. Does Amy have any questions for Chief? Well, I, I do. What is it that we can do for you and, and your team to make your jobs easier?
You know, if you, if you see something, say something. And I think that, that goes along with even with the police department. You know, if, but what we're really big with, we, we do have Pulse Point. We really love it when our citizens get involved. What we know from the data, data-driven, that when our citizens get involved with EMS calls, especially CPR, citizen CPR, we have a 75% cardiac survival rate here in our response area, which I will tell you, the, the average for the state of Washington is 47% and the national average is 37%. So if you're going to have a heart attack or cardiac arrest, which we don't want you to have, but if you're going to have it, have it in our areas because you have a really good survival rate chance. So, and we're very proud of that, that we, we are the tip of the spear. So, and we're proud to serve our community of Liberty Lake.
Great, great. And, and do I understand correctly, you are a resident of Liberty Lake?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Not know that. Well, glad to have you. So stop by, call anytime. You're, you're very welcome to join us. Does anybody else, one more chance for questions? Councilmember Cargill.
Thanks very much, Chief. I have a quick question for you. On page 10 of the report that we got from Brian, you've got that equipment purchased and it shows the picture of the boat. How often do you use that and where do you use it? Do you, do you use it on Liberty Lake and other?
So that current boat that you're looking at is at Station 2, which is in the Millwood area. However, we have two response stations that have rescue boats. So one is Station 5 and one is Station 2. They will respond to Liberty Lake absolutely if we get a call there. Yes, sir. And we do, we do use them quite often. Right now, not so much. Not, not too many people are in the water on a normal basis. However, we do train once a week. So we are in the water. We're making sure that we are perfecting our skills in order to respond to our citizens.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Well, we really appreciate you joining us and I'll, you and I can keep in touch. And when you're ready to come back, then do further presentations and hopefully you can be here in person. So.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Stick around with us or, you know, feel free to, feel free to drop off. I don't know if you want to, or, or we're going to go through reports and then another, further trailhead workshops. So stay tuned, stay tuned.
Yes, ma'am. I'm honored to be here. Thank you.
On, congratulations again. All right. Okay, everybody, we are to reports and inquiries. City Council reports is first. So are there any councilors who'd like to report on anything over the last couple of weeks? Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the chance to attend one of the open houses for the Liberty Launch Academy, which is the new school that's going to be opening up over near the Meadowwood complex. And it was very impressive to see what they have all lined up for that. And I'm hoping we could get them in here maybe for a special presentation in the next month or two. Because their, the, the community interest in that, at least in the session that I was in, was, was pretty high. The other thing I wanted to mention, we don't have a council meeting next week, but a week from tonight is International Women's Day. And so we have a lot of great women, of course, on this council and our mayor and in working in the city. So I hope everyone will recognize that. I am going to make a, and my wife and I are going to make a contribution to the Women and Children's Free Restaurant in Spokane, in the name of all the women we have serving our council and the mayor and, and the city as well. And the Women and Children's Free Restaurant helps fill nutritional gaps for women and children in need in our city. So it's a great, great charity and I hope everyone will check it out. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. Any other council reports? Y'all are quiet tonight. All right. So moving on, I guess I'm next. Mayor's report. So despite being out of town for about a week, still a packed mayor's report, I got that out this afternoon. So I won't go through all the details. Had some trainings over the last couple of weeks with MRSC and AWCC. We did, myself and some of our, our, our other employees were, had a great time attending the Selkirk Middle School Career Fair. So I was joined by David Williams, our city engineer, Trevor Reagan. I always mess up Zach's last name. Zach Sherman and Derek Kosinski, and they all did a great job. And Officer Holdhouse was there representing the PD on the other side of the room. And it was interesting seeing all these little sixth, seventh and eighth graders come up to the table. Some of them just would stand there and stare at you. I think they had a little deer in the headlights, but you know, the eighth graders, they were either checking the boxes on their sheets or they were asking really good questions. So it was a great chance to talk to them about different, different things in the city. And you know, how you can, no matter what career path you take, you can pretty much find that equivalent position in, within a governmental agency. So looking forward in the next couple of months, we'll also be taking part at the Ridgeline High School Job Fair. So hopefully the timing will be right. We can pick up some, some 18-year-olds for, for some of our part-time positions this summer. And later this month, I am, I think I mentioned before, I am going to be doing a coaching session with the Future Business Leaders of America over at Ridgeline, coaching them on their job interview skills. So one more volunteer gig can't hurt. We've completed all but two of our community engagement interviews. We've got one more scheduled for Thursday. I'm still trying to get ahold of the last one. So, and Councilmember Kurtz and I have been working together on that. We hope to have the list together by the end of this week and then she and I'll go through and figure out who's in what position because the, the, the term, terms will be rotating. So we'll go through that with the intent of having those appointments before you at the 15th, a meeting on the 15th for approval. And we're still working through our communication specialists interviews. So my thought is that once we do get the community engagement commissioners appointed to have a informal retreat for them to get to know each other a little bit better, Councilmember Kurtz and I'll probably attend just to get to know them and just kind of break the ice and then we'll make it more formal when we get our communication specialists on board. Let me see, where else are we? We did have our police department promotion ceremony today. As Chief Simmons noted, we, we had promoted Sergeant Morgan to our first lieutenant position. And Officer Matt McKay is now our second detective. So congratulations to both of them. And looking forward to seeing further progress on our, our crime solving. Boko Pop, I'm sure a lot of you have heard of them. They had their official grand opening and ribbon cutting this Saturday, about a year into things. But you know, COVID kind of pushed that off. They, I met with them just yesterday and they think they had about 1,000 people come through their doors in the timestamp, timeframe of about 11:00, 11:00 in the morning to 3:00 PM. I got there a little bit after 11:00 and they were out the door already. It was amazing, amazing response. They've been, they're already in tune with being a great community partner. They're working with Ridgeline on some projects for their, I always get the name wrong, their Verde Logo. I had to look at, make sure I didn't mess that name up, but they're looking at having a contest between some of the, the groups at Ridgeline High School. Some of the, some of the, some of the clubs, I guess, to probably name some drinks and, and whoever, whichever club is going to win is going to get a Boko party. So look for, look for more community engagement from those guys. They've got a great little business. I will be, I'd not be here for the meeting on the 15th. Mayor Pro Tem Folio will have the honor of chairing that meeting. I will be in Washington DC for the National League of Cities, Congressional Cities Conference and Executive Education. So I will make sure I've got everybody up to speed on things before I leave for that. And that's it. There's a lot of stuff on my mayor's report for upcoming trainings and things like that. So hopefully you find some of that informative. And if there's trainings and conferences you guys want to go to, make sure you get ahold of Kelsey and she will help get you guys signed up for that. All right. Now we've got the city administrator report. Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we will begin the evening with an employee introduction with Lisa.
Another first day on the job.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm very pleased to introduce Amy Muller-Lyle, our new senior planner. Amy comes with just a wealth of experience in planning and in public administration. And I'll let her share some of the details with you, but I did have the privilege of working with her at the City of Spokane.
Welcome, Amy.
Thank you. Evening, councilmembers. There you go. I'm, I don't know. I don't know what to say. It's my first day. I had a great first day. I got to know you guys, the city, a lot better than I did before, which I thought was pretty well, actually. But it was, it was a great first day and I look forward to working with you guys.
We're happy to have you and I know Lisa's really happy to have you.
And she's got the sparkliest mask I've ever seen.
It's great. Well, welcome and you will love it here. You've got a great team. Thanks.
Thank you. And David, we'll kick it off to you for a signal update.
Yeah, just a real quick update. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, everyone in attendance. Construction on the project will begin next Monday. The duration, I'm forgetting the duration, you can ask me that another time. But there, I wanted to make sure you know that there will be some traffic impacts for the near future along Country Vista so that there will be some lane closures so that we can get this, the signal put up safely. So just want to make sure you guys all know that.
Right. Thank you. I'm sure everybody who lives in Legacy Ridge will be thrilled to get that up and running.
Yes.
Thank you, David. And as I had mentioned previously, a couple of meetings ago, that the Ridgeline Falcons are beginning this Verde Logo campaign. It starts today. And we are supporting them in their venture by just sharing out the information on social media as much as we can and kind of supporting them. But I know the mayor mentioned it as well. They are tag teaming something with Boko Pop.
And a lot of the other local businesses.
Yeah. So check out our, our Facebook page and you can find out the information there or go to their Ridgeline Falcons Facebook page. And then we have, we will have potentially some council interviews on March 15th. Is it, is it advisable to continue with the same or similar past council questions? Is everybody on board with kind of what we've used in the past or would we like those changed?
Yeah, we had some changes this last time around. Are there any other changes that you guys would like to make on the next set?
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering, since we just did it like three weeks ago or however long it was, if we should change it up a, a little bit with some of the questions so that assuming, I, I assume we're going to get the same, some of the same people applying. And it might be unfair to those people, or excuse me, to the people who haven't applied. If the people who have applied in the past know the question.
So would you like us to send out what we used last time to all of you and then you can provide feedback?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
And let's, let's make sure we get that feedback. I don't have the calendar for me by, by the end of next week.
Kelsey, can you, can you handle that? Manage that for us? Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. And just to tack on, I would highly urge fellow council in giving feedback to perhaps condense the questions. I know last time we were up on time so quickly. So the questions in and of themselves were quite lengthy.
Very good. And then as far as events and reminders, mentioned the kickoff for Verde Logo, the month of March. Kwanis Father Daughter Dance is this Saturday. I received information from the Spokane Valley Fire Department down here on Country Vista is holding a car seat checkup. And we have that posted on our website as well as social. And we have that posted on our website as well as social media. The Easter egg hunt is back in full force in April and Spring Cleanup Day. That's the event that we tag team with Waste Management, Goodwill, and the Sora District over at Town Square Park. That is full on. So it's event season. That is all I have. If there are any questions?
I don't see any. Thanks, Jen.
Yep.
All right, everybody, we are back to workshops and we only have the one. So we will continue with our Trailhead Workshop, a great, great presentation at six o'clock. Really appreciate all the work the team, team put in. So, you know, yeah, I know the, the, the desire is to get approval from council tonight to, to proceed and give the team direction on the next steps. Jonathan, I know you popped up there. Do you, do you want to kick, to kick this off with, with the asks? And then we can turn it over to the council for more questions and discussion.
Yeah, I think that's really it here. And Steve can chime in with more, but we're really looking for some solid direction on proceeding with design so that we can kind of turn Architects West loose here. And they can actually start designing to the building and continue to refine the details. Anything else to add, Steve?
No, I, I think that's it. You know, it's not so much that we need direction on the design elements specifically. We just need generally either approval of where we're at or comments on where we're at that we need to go forward with. But yeah, I foresee the next phase as being quite a bit of design work and then bringing back to the council the, really the completed building and site design showing everything about what it's going to be and what it's going to look like. That would take a little bit of time, but that'll be the next step.
Right. Thank you. Jonathan, I don't know if it, it would be a good idea or if you're, I'm sure you probably have it close by as the timeline that we've been working to. Obviously, we've had a, a week for week slip. I didn't know if you had, had an updated timeline to look at to see where we are with regards to different activities being pushed out.
You know, I don't, we, we shared the schedule last week, so we're, it's, it's pretty similar to what we shared last week. But I would just reiterate, I don't mean to sound like a broken record or scare tactics or anything like that. But I'm continually hearing from the subcontracting market, they are starting to get busy. There's lots of, there's lots of projects out to bid right now. The busier they got, the busier they get, they get, the less competition we will have when we go to bid this project out.
Great. Thank you. So, yeah, so just to kind of do a quick summary before we jump into any further discussion. You know, I know the ask from the council was to bring back, you know, a project at the six point four million for the building. From what I've seen, that's been delivered. And I love the addition of the, the photos, you know, as concepts to kind of make, make it a little bit easier to picture for the council. So, you know, I would obviously, you know, push for as well a, a motion to, from the council and a second and a vote to approve moving ahead with the six point four million dollars on this project and so we can turn the team loose on design. So council, you're, you're up. Councilmember Cargill.
Lisa, can I ask a, a quick follow-up or just ask for some clarification on a comment that you made in the six P M session? And please correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I remember you saying, or I wrote down, that we won't have the cost for the driving range before we have the, the guaranteed cost for the building. Is that accurate?
What I said is that it's very, very unlikely. Like I said, I, I've got a four to five month lead time and this team would anticipate having, having design concepts, like design detail back to city council for feedback in an open house in an actual guaranteed maximum price, probably in a, in a much shorter timeframe. Is that fair, Jonathan?
Yes, that's fair. If, if we can, if we can keep design moving forward, I think we can hit a GMP prior to having the, the polls and netting lockdown. And just to your point, Lisa, it will take some significant amount of time to publicly bid that process and follow the R C Ws like we have to.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Other hands. Council, Mayor Pro Tem Foliar.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of thoughts, a couple of questions, if I may. So I guess my first thought is, are we estimating the golf revenue to be one eighty to two hundred a year? Is that what I heard you say, Kyle?
I would say on the extremely conservative side, I would expect that to be quite a bit.
So two hundred to two forty?
Yeah, that's, I think that's a fair statement.
And do you recall, what was the previous debt service when we purchased it twenty years ago per year? Was it like?
A hundred and sixty-eight.
Hundred and sixty-eight.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, so if, if I can, I'd like to speak to that a little bit. The estimated golf revenue of two hundred to two forty plus the hundred and sixty-eight thousand a year that we've been making for the last twenty years without any issues. The housing market has gone up and down, has been, has been, everybody knows, which affects the REIT funds. Is that correct, Kyle?
Correct.
So a REIT fund happens every time I sale of a home, it happens. So it's not based on new construction, it's based on every time a home sells, even resale. So is that correct, Kyle?
Correct.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. So, so based on our budget and based on three seventy year for a twenty year bond, it seems to me that we're right in there with what we've been paying plus the revenue from the course. So for me, that checks that box. The question I have on the, the number you're using of seven point four is, is a million of that set aside for the range?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I guess I look at it a little bit differently. As a capital project, just in the fact that we were going to have to do something with this range regardless. So I don't want to, I'm not going to get wound up in the extra million in that seven point four when I'm pretty happy with, we had a budget of eight point four. We're, we're basically peeling out two million as a, a, a safety net to be able to do something with the net. And we're going to go build and fix the site and do all that other stuff for six point four, which is, I think, much less than what any of us anticipated. And what I'm seeing tonight checks the box for me as well. The only comment I have on the design so far is I would just question the angle of the deck, as I said earlier. I don't, it's not someone willing to hang my hat on, but anytime you get into angles like that, it seems like you don't maximize the square footage. And I think at this price point, we really need to maximize the footage. I'll, I'll turn a little bit further to the left to have my margarita to look out on the golf course. It's okay. And then I'll make a motion after everybody else's comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Baird had her hand up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier, Kyle was sharing the financing slides. I, I don't know if we're able to pull that back up. Kyle, specifically the first slide that you included verse, two million down versus three million down. One of the hesitations I have with doing a twenty year bond is, in one of our prior meetings, I think Councilmember Cargill asked, what is the, or it may have been Councilmember Foliar, who asked, what's the lifespan of the building? And we were told roughly twenty-five years. So it makes me uncomfortable doing a twenty year bond and then only having five years until repairs are needed. I would strongly urge us, if we're moving forward with this, to look at a fifteen year bond and to do the three million dollars down. If we did that, knowing that we're financing four point four million, the three million down plus the debt services comes out to, you know, eight million, six hundred and twenty-five, which is right at the budget price tag that we were shooting for. I, I just don't feel comfortable doing a twenty or thirty year bond for the reasons I've stated. And I think short term always gives you a better financing rate and you're not paying as much in interest. So I would just ask council to consider that. Thank you.
Quick question, just to clarify, Councilmember Baird. So, so Kyle, what is the timing of the council needing to make the decision on the bond, how much we're putting down and the timeframe?
So that's usually about a six-week window. And so once we get direction from council on a budget and how much down, so I will reach out to Northwest Municipal Advisors, who we have a contract with, that we brought to council last October. And we will, at this, at the following meeting, lay out that roadmap from the initiation of bond council to closing of the bond sale and what that, what that roadmap looks like.
And then, and yeah, because, because, you know, at what point do we have to have that secured, you know, with regards to the timeline for starting construction and whatnot? So if you wrap all that up together for the council to see that be, that's really what we need.
Perfect.
Great. Thank you. All right. I mean, Councilmember Van Orman.
Thank you. By the way, thank you for the presentation. It kind of has taken it to a whole new level. Going from the original, you know, eight point four to twelve point, you know, was mind-boggling to me, to be able to bring it down to where it's kind of like the elephant in the room bite-sized pieces. Yay. I too agree with Councilmember Baird as far as putting down a little more and shortening up the time. And yes, Kyle, I lived through it and I will be the first one to say that let's make sure that we're conservative, that we do right by the council, we do right by our citizens, and we make sure that we are looking out for the best route possible. I think with the square footage that came in, I feel very confident that we are reaching the goals for our residents. And if we've got great years, which I know after having a, a meeting with Lisa, that we're in for some really busy year. So we should be able to pay this off sooner than anything. So, um, thank you. I, I think this is great.
Awesome. Right, Councilmember Kurtz, any comments, questions?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor, I don't think I have any questions. I guess I'm just excited to move forward. I'm excited to see what Architects West is going to design for us. Because I think once we see that, I, I'm, I'm excited to get the community involved in that piece too and, and have them see what this will actually be and how it can be a part of the community moving forward. With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve of going forward. Is that the right way to say that?
Yes. So if you could include in your motion, the, the, the dollar, the dollar amount, I guess, would that be appropriate, Kyle?
Looks like Phil's got his hand up.
Yeah, sorry.
Annie, I have one prepared.
Okay, you go ahead.
Thank you.
No, I think you were, you were taking away his spotlight there, I think.
Don't do that. Thank you.
Sorry.
So I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to have the Trailhead Design Build Team continue with the process by utilizing the scope in tonight's presentation with a budget of six million, four hundred and five thousand dollars.
A second. And a second from Councilmember Kurtz. All right. Any further questions or discussion? Councilmember Cargill.
Kyle, can I ask one question of you before we proceed to a vote here? On, and I know we've beat this to death, but let me just ask it in because I want a clarification. On page twenty-seven of the, of the budget that we have in the city, I know former councilmember Kennedy used to talk about this. Says the city will set fees and user charges for each enterprise fund, such as the golf course, at a level that fully supports the total direct and indirect costs of the activity. Is there any scenario that you had on that financing page? Any setup, three down, four down, two down, whatever, fifteen year, twenty year, thirty year? Is there any scenario where that happens?
No. So we would have to take a look at that and amend that language in the budgets to include for, for, you know, these costs.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All right, we're on a roll. All in favor of approving the motion as read by Mayor Pro Tem Foliar, I'm not going to repeat it. I think it was very clear, approving the, the, the dollars that were presented tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, we have councilmembers Van Orman, Kurtz, Foliar, and Baird. Yeah, for, on the yes side, and Councilmember Cargill was a nay. All right, motion passes. All right, nobody's gonna stand up and do a happy dance. We still have a lot of, a lot of work ahead of us. But looking forward to see the next steps from the team. Thank you guys for your patience and understanding as we've gone through this process. It's, it, it's been a rough road, but I think we, we all ended up where, where we hope we'd be. So I'm looking forward to the next steps.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, we are on to general business.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think I could do my job from here.
Okay, good. Your, your connection's been good. So I was, I was getting on, on, on doing some prompts, but go for it. General business, consent agenda.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A, one, two, and three. Approve the February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting minutes, through the February twenty-second to twenty twenty-two special city council meeting minutes. And approve the March first, twenty twenty-two vouchers in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-two cents.
I got a bunch of seconds. Councilmember Baird, second. All right, any questions, discussions? Not seeing any. All in favor of approval, consent agenda items one, two, A, one, two, and three, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes, five zero. That's kind of weird to say with the five. All right, next, Mayor Pro Tem.
General business item number ten, B, one, approve, make a motion to approve the three-year contracts with Skyhawks and Soccer Tots and authorize the mayor to execute the agreements.
Second. We had a second from Councilmember Cargill. Any questions? Jen or Trevor, do you guys want to just do a high level on this? Because I know we have a lot of new members.
This is, uh, these are our recreation programs that we provide in the summertime at our parks. We contract our programming out and we use Skyhawks. Skyhawks and Soccer Tots are under the same umbrella. We've used them for several years and they're very popular camps and they fill out quite often.
And as you saw on the, on the agenda bill that the city retains twenty percent of this. All right, if there are no any questions, we'll go to a vote. All in favor of approving action item B one for the three-year contract for Skyhawks and Soccer Tots, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? All right, not hearing any. Motion passes, five zero.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Action item number B two. Make a motion to approve the three-year contract with Challenger Sports and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Baird. Same situation with this one as the first.
Is a two-week camp, one weekend in early summer, one weekend in the late summer, and it's at Rocky Hill Park Soccer Camps.
Yep, again, very, very popular.
Yep.
All right, any questions, discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor of approving action item B two for the contract with Challenger Sports, please say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? The motion passes, five zero.
Thank you, Mayor. Action item B three, make a motion to select the, for the selection of the recruitment firm and level of service for city administrator position search.
We have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Baird. All right, before I go to questions, I know, oh, Kyle, go ahead.
Sorry, so this was, so council directed us to bring back the two preferred, the, the two preferred routes from Proffman. And so what we have in our packet are both of those, the sourcing only, that just basically advertises and then directs applicants back to the Liberty Lake website. And then the second one was the sourcing and screening, which Proffman conducts the preliminary screening in addition to all the advertising and hands Liberty Lake a pool of pre-screened applicants for the city then to, to take the distance. And so I have included some schedules in here. And so for the sourcing only, Proffman would get started next week. And then we would have an application closing date on our website of mid-April. And so they, they estimate it April seventeen. And so for the sourcing and screening. And so for the sourcing and screening, it's a little bit more involved, obviously, on their end. And so that schedule has, you know, uh, a, a work session, uh, likely via Zoom, uh, to review the semi-finalists and pick that pool of applicants. Uh, sometime that first or second week of May. And as we discussed at the last meeting, you know, we have amounts, for each, and I did a ballpark figure for council consideration in the agenda bill for the sourcing only. We can authorize the mayor to sign an agreement not to exceed fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars. We, we can go the sourcing and screening route. That one, if we kind of incorporate everything, it would be to sign an agreement not to exceed twenty-one thousand, nine hundred. And I just did a ballpark estimate of all of those advertisements and, and additional expenses, uh, that were included uh, in that, uh, in those different proposals, uh, as kind of the, the high watermark for, for each of those. For, for each of those options. So it's, uh, for, for council consideration on, on which route, uh, you, you would like us to proceed and authorize the mayor to sign a subsequent agreement.
Yeah, and, and I think I had mentioned the last time that, that the last meeting where that we talked about this. I highly value the additional screening piece, uh, for option two listed in the agenda bill. Obviously being cognizant of not, not exceeding the twenty-one thousand, nine hundred number and keeping that as low as possible. But, um, I think it's, it's worth the additional, if, there was only a one-week slip from what I saw in the application deadline um, between the two schedules. Obviously, there's a little bit more work after that to, to get through the screening, but we're going to go through that no matter what. So it really doesn't affect the timeline very much if we go with, with the second one. So, um, my request to the council would be, um, for somebody to make a motion to, to amend, to make an amendment to the motion to, um, approve the option two on the agenda bill not to exceed twenty-one nine. So, um, obviously further discussion and if somebody, um, wants to make that motion, that'd be great. Councilmember Cargill.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a, a quick question. I'm not sure if it's for Kyle or, or maybe you, uh, Mayor. Uh, on the second one, it looks like they, uh, they say in that, uh, let's see, fourth paragraph down, that they're going to identify the top three to six candidates. Am I understanding it correctly that the second one would be three to six, but the first one, basically, it's just all up to us to determine who the other ones are going to be, right?
Yeah, uh, every single applicant in the first proposal would be directed straight to the Liberty Lake website and subsequently our HR manager.
Okay, thank you.
And the mayor.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, so is, is somebody willing to request to amend the motion to, uh, I see two hands at one time. Councilmember Baird?
I'll defer to Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, you're up.
Well, thank you, thank you. I guess I'm a little confused on where the twenty-one comes in and what we get for that versus the thirteen.
It's a little tricky because you, we have a lot of these add-ons where, you know, we don't need everything here, but I didn't want to hamstring the process. And so, you know, if you look through each proposal, uh, there's a fee and expense category on each of those. And I kind of went through those and kind of ballparked what I think a high watermark would be on those. So your base fee for the sourcing only is at sixty-five hundred and your base fee for the sourcing and screening is thirteen thousand, five hundred. And then you have these a- added expenses that, that will be incurred over the course of the recruitment.
So I think I said at our last discussion about this, um, for the thirteen-five, we basically get um, candidates and screening and vetting and background checks and all this other good stuff. And I think my comment was, I think we can pick from there. So am I missing something?
So that's their base fee and then they have these added expenses on top, like the advertisements and, and, uh, and direct mailers that, that are like, can, in essence, all a card items.
Yeah. And what we, you know, we reduce that as much as possible.
Yeah.
But I, I do highly, highly value the additional screening, um, that, that they would perform with that other option, which, which includes, um, you know, cap, application review, screening, um, oh, where was it? Internet publication, background searches and things like that, um, that would probably have a much deeper reach than we would on our own.
So I have a, oh, sorry.
No, what was the number again? Twenty-one, but?
Twenty-one thousand, nine hundred would be the up to amount.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baird, did you have a question?
Yes, sorry. Uh, my question would be with the, um, sourcing and screening option, would council receive packets for the candidates who make it through screening? Or would it be reduced further before council would be involved? I know that's a little outside of the scope of this action item, but.
One of the deliverables is a full packet on every single finalist.
And, and those, so every single person that makes it through screening, correct?
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? If not, uh, Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to make an amendment, motion to amend your motion? Hold on a second, Sean's got, got a comment.
Um, Phil, did you make the first, did you make the first motion? Am I right? Phil making the first motion?
Yes.
So, um, the standpoint of, um, amending, you, you could accept a friendly amendment to just pick one or the other. Um, or someone else could make a motion to say, let's select, let's amend the original motion to selection A or B. And then vote on that. And then based upon the amendment, vote on the original motion.
Anne McFarland says there is no such thing as a friendly amendment, you know?
I realize that, but I think the, the issue was with regard to what the selection was on the, on the agenda.
Yeah, understood. Uh, Councilmember Van Orman.
So I'd like to make a, a motion to take on, uh, option two with, uh, Proffman to go through the screening process.
Okay, so we have a second to choose option two.
Not to exceed twenty-nine hundred.
Just Councilmember Cargill.
Just a point of clarification. Uh, wasn't the original motion still on the floor?
Yeah, so this would be, this, this is.
This would be an amendment, an unfriendly amendment.
It's, it's just because there was two options and the original motion didn't select a particular option.
Platonic amendment. So, um, so like, uh, Councilmember, Councilmember Van Orman's motion is to amend the um, motion on the floor to specify choosing option two, which would include, I gotta get the right page. I keep flipping back and forth, sourcing and screening not to exceed twenty-one thousand, nine hundred. Does that sound right, Councilmember Van Orman?
That is correct.
Do we have a second for the amendment? There's a second from Councilmember Baird. Write this down because inevitably when I don't write it down, that's when we lose track. Okay, so any questions or discussion on amending the original motion to call out option two not to exceed twenty-one thousand, nine hundred? Right, not hearing any. All in favor of the amendment, um, please say aye. Right, any opposed? All right, so the amendment passes. So, um, we are back to the original amendment. So all in favor of approving the, again, sorry guys, I'm flipping back and forth between pages. All in favor of approving the action item B three, the selection of recruitment firm and level selection of the recruitment firm, including sourcing and screening not to exceed twenty-one thousand, nine hundred, please say aye.
Uh, so moved. I think you could make a motion, Mayor, sorry.
No, oh, no, I didn't. Um, I was taking the vote on your, on your original motion that was.
Oh, you're restating it. Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, that, yeah, I don't make sure we do that just for record-keeping purposes. All right, any opposed? All right, not seeing any, or item B three passes five zero. All right, thank you, everybody. Nice job for first, first meeting there, Mayor Pro Tem. All right, council comments. Um, do we have anything from the, any comments or questions from the council, just in general? Um, just remember we do have introduction of upcoming agenda items later on in the meeting. Not seeing any. Okay, we will move on to public hearings, appeals. We don't have any. Um, now we are on to resolutions. Um, Kelsey, I will turn it over to you for resolution twenty-two dash two nine six.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, resolution twenty-two dash two nine six is a resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, regarding the opposition to a local income tax on the residents and businesses of the City of Liberty Lake.
Thank you. All right, I can't remember, are we doing Susan Holman first or after we motion? Okay, that's what I thought. All right, do we have a motion to, um, to approve resolution twenty-two two ninety-six?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, uh, we have a motion by Councilmember Baird and we have a second. A second by Councilmember Cargill, make a note here. All right, so, um, now we do have time for citizen comments. So if anybody here in chambers with us or anybody joining us by Zoom, um, has a citizen comment with regards to resolution two, twenty-two dash two nine six, um, which would ban a local income tax in the City of Liberty Lake, um, please send a note via chat to Todd Henderson if you're on Zoom. And looks like we have, probably, I don't see any hands in the audience here. Or if you are on Zoom and you're on video, I will scroll through and see if you guys, anybody put their hand up on Zoom. I am not seeing any. All right, not hearing any. We will, I will take the vote. All in favor of approving resolution twenty-two dash United States. Okay, it was great. Yeah, sorry, Annie. We're just, we're just staying along so fast tonight. I was getting used to it. Sorry, any council discussion, Councilmember Kurtz.
Um, I, I think for me, I'm, um, for the record, I, I don't support a local income tax. Um, and, and if one came before the council, I would definitely vote no on it. Um, I, I guess with this resolution, um, I'm con, just concerned about the insistence that the council consider this topic. Um, I know it's been discussed a couple of times. Um, but I, I have gotten emails, um, from the Washington Policy Center specific to this topic. Um, and so I do still have a concern about a, a conflict of interest. Um, I want to make sure that there isn't any appearance, at least for, for my vote, um, about undue influence um, from a private interest. And, um, so for me, even though I don't support, um, a local income tax, um, I do intend to vote no on the resolution.
Thank you. Any other council discussion or comments? Councilmember Baird.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I kind of wanted to address some of the, um, concerns, um, expressed, uh, from citizens. Uh, a- and part of those comments centered around, um, are, are we inventing a problem where none exists? And, uh, I have to go back to something my dad taught me growing up and that was that good leadership is visionary, not reactionary. Reactionary leadership, my dad always said, was crisis management, something we don't want to be in the position of. And, uh, one of the reasons that I support this resolution is because I think it sends a clear signal to our citizens that we hear them in their repeated attempts to, or excuse me, repeated, uh, ballot votes to not have a local income tax. And while I know currently it's no one's desire to implement, um, a local income tax, I think it sends a strong message to our citizens and to our local businesses that we don't have that intention. And while a resolution would not prevent, um, a future city council from, um, implementing a local income tax, they would first have to rescind this resolution, which I do believe would generate quite a bit of public input. And I plan on going on record tonight in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Knew that one was coming. Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, uh, quickly, uh, say that, um, we are not alone in this. Uh, there are twenty, now twenty-six, I think, by last count, other cities and counties across the state that have adopted some form of this type of proclamation or plan or. Ordinance, whatever you call it, it varies city by, city by city. But the whole point is that we are moving in a perilous direction when it comes to this topic in our state. And the citizens have said over and over and over again that they do not want an income tax of any kind. Whether it be a city income tax, a state income tax, uh, they do not want one. So all this does is put the city on record that we will and commits that we will not have an income tax in our city. And right now, we are, and I think my mic is going out here, uh, we are the largest city in our. Hopefully everyone can hear me now. Right now, we're the largest city in our county that does not have, uh, or has not taken a position on this, which concerns me in terms of the message that it sends, uh, to the business community and our citizens. So that is why I support it and that is why I brought it forward and I hope the council will support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from Mayor Pro Tem or? I was getting to you, um, Councilmember Maria Norman.
I too have been, am in support and realize that most legislators across the state are looking to city councils to give support so they can make sure that they're doing what there's, is necessary to make sure this doesn't go against Washington State Constitution. I've read much input from the citizens and by far, they too know that businesses are attracted to a state without an income tax. So being in business ourselves, uh, yes, I very much support this.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Pro Tem, any comments?
Oh, y'all know where I'm at. Let's vote.
Okay. All right, so, um, we got a motion and a second. Do we have citizens? No, sorry, I'm already past that, right? Yes. Oh, boy, I don't know what's with me today. I guess my brain's still in Hawaii a little bit. All right, so, um, so this will be a, a hand vote. Um, so council members all in favor of, of approving resolution twenty-two dash two nine six, please raise your hand and keep it up for just a moment. All right, and any opposed? All right, we have, um, Councilmembers Cargill, Van Orman, Foliar and Baird in, in support. And Councilmember Kurtz opposed. Thank you guys. Got that passed five to one. All right, Kelsey, you're up again. Twenty-two, two ninety-seven.
Four to one.
Four to one, so. All right, go ahead, Kelsey.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Resolution number twenty-two dash two ninety-seven is a resolution of the City of Liberty Lake administratively changing the zoning designation of a split zoned property in accordance with the provisions of City Development Code ten dash two A dash two.
Right, thank you. So before we take a motion, Lisa, do you want to go over this, um, for everybody? Pretty much an administrative change, but, um, I'm sure there might be some questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm going to share my screen here real quickly. Um, so, um, I just wanted to kind of explain the history on this parcel and the process and why we're, we've got a resolution before you and my PowerPoint's not working. I can't.
There you go.
Thank you. Um, can y'all see my screen? Um, this parcel was annexed into the city by Central Valley School District, District in twenty eighteen. And the parcel boundary, just the parcel to the north is actually in the City of Liberty Lake at that time. The boundary of the parcel actually followed in the old canal area. And, um, at the time of the annexation, the school district ex, uh, requested that this, the, the parcel be zone uh, P for public and, and semi-public institutions because their intent was to build a high school there. And that was actually the purpose for the annexation. Um, in twenty nineteen, the school district, um, entered into a, um, in, into a property exchange agreement with Centennial Properties who owned the property to the north. Um, so that because they needed this parcel, they owned this parcel down here, but they needed this piece uh, for their, um, for their ball fields. And what they ended up doing was doing a boundary line adjustment and evening up the boundary of, of the property to the north. Um, it basically in exchange for this parcel here. And what that ended up doing was creating, um, split zone. split zoning. So the boundary for the M-two zone followed along the canal, but this new parcel, the boundary is now this new line. So what ended up happening, this parcel is a little bit over thirteen acres and ten, ten acres and change are zoned M-two with the balance of it the three, three acres and change being zoned P. Now, our Development Code, Section ten-two A two provides a mechanism for the city to administratively address conflicts created by split zoning. The property owner, Centennial Property, has asked that the smaller portion of the lot that is currently zoned P be rezoned to the M-two zone, which is in accordance with that provision. That's the remedy that's provided. So we're simply asking city council to authorize the administrative, the administrative rezoning of this property and direct staff to update the zoning map to address this. So a simple resolution, I just wanted to kind of explain the history and why, why this is what it is and see if there were any questions.
All right, any questions for Lisa? Councilmember Van Orman.
Realize that when we go ahead and take a public zone and rezone it to M-two, that basically makes it a multi-purpose, mixed use. Which could be anything from residential to restaurants, businesses.
That is, that is correct. The only way you can get residential on here, though, is if they dedicate oh, one, one for one square footage commercial to residential. Again, we have been approached by Centennial. Right now, the bulk of the parcel is already in the M-two zone, the portion that fronts on Country Vista Drive.
All right, Councilmember Kurtz.
Are there any preliminary plans that Centennial Properties has for the property, or they just want to change the zoning at this point to make it all even?
No, no preliminary plans. They want to, they, their intent all along was to even up the zone. This is, again, this is just, this is a given, but because we also have to change the given the, the way that the code is written, we also, but we also need some, we, we would like council to authorize the changing of the zoning map. We could do that as part of the annual cycle, but we're in the process of updating other zoning maps based upon the other annexation that the Central Valley School District did earlier in the year, and we'd like to get this cleaned up. So otherwise, we would do the zone, the map change as part of just the annual cycle. But the interpretation, the administrative interpretation is already prescribed in, in the Development Code. If that makes sense.
Councilmember Baird.
Thank you, Lisa, for the presentation. I think it was helpful. I know a lot of folks weren't sure what this parcel referred to. Am I correct that the provision in city code to address split zoning means that unlike normal zoning changes, we do not have to go to a hearing examiner, and we do not have to have public hearings regarding the zone change? Is that accurate?
That is correct. This is an administrative decision. Again, asking for the resolution to have, to, to have the ability to then reflect this interpretation on the zoning map.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Has, has the boundary line adjustment already been done, recorded?
Yes, that was recorded in twenty nineteen.
And the canal you speak of, is that a wetlands or is it just an abandoned?
It's a man, it's, it's a man-made irrigation, which it's, there's some remnants of concrete there, but it was actually, they already went through the process of declassifying it as as a, a stream or whatever with DNR. So that happened, that happened in twenty seventeen, I think, before the school district even started this process.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cargill, any questions? All right. Okay, so it doesn't sound like there's any other questions. We have a motion to approve twenty-two dash two nine seven. So maybe a motion by Councilmember Baird.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cargill. All right, we are to citizen comments. If there's anybody, once again, on Zoom or here in chambers who would like to comment on this administrative zoning change, please send a note to Todd in chat. Or, or raise your hand if you're on video, and I will scroll through and see if I see anybody's hand up. Todd, anything? Okay, doesn't sound like we have any citizen comments. So any further discussion by the council? Not seeing or hearing any. All in favor of approving Resolution twenty-two dash two nine seven? Please raise your hand and keep it up so I can make sure I get the votes. That, that's easy. All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero. All right, Kelsey, last resolution.
All right, lastly, we have Resolution number twenty-two dash two ninety-eight, a resolution declaring an emergency and sole source purchase relating to a repair of the nine twenty-six M catwheel loader waiving the procurement requirements pursuant to page fifty-one of the city of Liberty Lake Financial Management Policies.
All right, I'm not sure who was going to do a quick presentation on this one.
So I'll give a little bit of background on this. So back in December, we had our front-end loader breakdown, and that needed to be repaired immediately. And so what happened is Western States responded, and so they got them on their, on their schedule to perform the repair. And so we had just lost our streets lead, and so we were in the process of transitioning and bringing on a new streets lead. And so obviously, the, the intent on their end was to get this fixed as fast as possible. And so there was some assumption that this would have been a repair covered under warranty since the operator testified to us that there, there wasn't anything major that, that he hit or that happened. And so we got a bill from Western States for seventy-two hundred in February. And so we had identified, okay, this was back from December. Let's, let's have a discussion with Western States on what the determination was. Their determination was customer damage. We did challenge that determination, and they sent an email that was included in the packet that upheld their determination of customer damage. And honestly, we, we don't have enough to refute their claim. And so it's, it's, I don't think it's a worthy exercise to really combat this because there was a pre-lease inspection that didn't identify any material defects in the equipment that we noted at the time. And so this is an administrative measure to recognize an emergency purchase that wasn't necessarily, you know, classified as an emergency purchase at the time, and also a sole source because Western States was the only facility that could perform these repairs. And so this resolution identifies both of those scenarios and authorizes us to proceed with the payment that, if approved, you will see on our next batch of invoices on March fifteen.
Councilmember Kurtz has a question.
I think my question, when I read through the email and talked about the bumpy terrain, the weight of the attachment and the cold weather contributing possibly to the break in the coupler. Is, is this going to happen again, I guess, is my, is my question. I mean, is, was there something specific with, with what was on the machine, or was it the combination of all three, and we just hope it doesn't happen again? Just wondering if, if there's anything that needs to be done so it doesn't happen again. I guess that's my question.
Great question. I did talk with the operator and, and our new streets lead, and they, they did not think that this should have happened. And so there is some legitimate concern there, and if we're operating in a similar fashion, we're going to get repeated breaks here. And so unfortunately, I don't have a good answer for you. But I guess the, it, it's a learning situation to potentially be more careful if, if, but you know, my understanding is the operator was traveling down Liberty Lake Road. There isn't any major issues with that, so it shouldn't have been a problem. And so that, that was certainly frustrating because this wasn't anticipated.
Kyle, Jen wants to weigh in.
No, please do. Okay. Just a little, a little quick background. I was on the radio when it happened, and he was just driving down the road when it broke down. And he commented he didn't hit anything. He didn't know why it broke. In all these years, we never had that happen. So while I can tell you, we don't anticipate that happening again. It's never a guarantee. But I do know it was, it was very much an unanticipated kind of a freak accident type of a situation. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Any other questions for Jen or Kyle? Oh, Councilmember, Mayor Protem Follier.
Yep, thank you. Just a comment, I guess. I, I understand normal wear and tear, and that's probably their argument. I don't know how old the equipment was, but it happens. I get it. I guess I would, is there any reason to revisit the warranty under the, the equipment? Is there, going forward, is there any reason to reevaluate our coverages? Or is it just outside of the window? It's probably just a month past expiration on the warranty, I'm guessing, right?
That's always how it works. But the, the issue is, is their determination of customer damage indicates that the warranty, any, any warranty language would not have this repair covered.
So normal wear and tear. Yeah, I, I read it. That's the first thing I saw. So, okay, just checking. Thank you.
Right, and to your point, if it happens again, absolutely. I mean, this would need to be revisited. But to Jen's point, this was a freak accident. And so we certainly don't anticipate anything like this happening again.
Fair enough. Thanks.
There's no other questions for Kyle or Jen. Is there a motion to approve twenty-two dash two ninety-eight?
Motion.
All right, motion. Okay, motion by Councilmember Baird and seconded by Councilmember Van Orman. All right, do we have any citizen comments on the approval of twenty-two dash two ninety-eight emergency and sole source repair? I know it's something really exciting that people might want to comment on. Unless we have, you know, some expert on our snow removal equipment out there. All right, Todd, see anything? Okay, all right, not seeing or hearing any citizen comments. Council, any further discussion? All right, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Those in favor of approving Resolution twenty-two dash two ninety-eight, please say aye and raise your hand. Hold it up there for me. It's like I've got five out of five. Any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero. All right, moving right along. We have no ordinances for tonight, no emergency ordinances, but we do have introduction of upcoming agenda items.
Yes, so coming up for workshops, I don't have anything specific in the matrix for the fifteenth, however, I know we're planning on doing the interviews to fill the council vacancy, so I assume that that may take the time of a workshop, but open to any suggestions, input on what needs to be scheduled for the fifteenth.
So council, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Cargill.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if this is the case, and depending on how many candidates we get, should we do the, try to do the interviews in the six o'clock hour, or at least some of them in the six o'clock hour, and then come back in the seven o'clock and, and complete them if we've got more than we can handle?
Any comments from council? Anybody opposed to that? Oh, Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead.
I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I just wonder if, if we're going to have, I would like the candidates to know which section of the, the meeting that they're in, so they're not waiting through our invocation and all of the other things that we do ahead of time. But yeah, I mean, I hope you have a lot of candidates and, and lots of people to choose from, so.
All right, looking at our, our normal agenda flow, I guess my, my question for Sean was if, if the council does a six P M workshop and it needs to flow over into seven, would adding it under announcements, proclamations, special presentations be an appropriate place so they don't, the, the candidates don't have to wait through reports and workshops and all of that?
You mean as far as where to put the interviews?
Yeah, if they have to carry over to seven. Where, where could the council make a motion at that meeting to add a six B for continuation of interviews?
You mean after citizens' comments?
Yeah.
I, I would probably put it, it probably may be before eight, so maybe seven. The one question that I have or thought that comes to mind, and I think someone mentioned this at the last meeting, was with regard to the questions, is there a number of people at six o'clock hour? And people aren't supposed to come in their specific, specific time until seven, they can certainly log on and watch the interviews in the seven o'clock hour. So I think some of it's just going to be dependent upon how many people apply, and then trying to figure out what it looks like once we got the specific numbers.
So I, I guess my, and Councilmember Kurtz, I see your hand up. Give me just a second. So I guess my next question would be, is it, I know obviously all of our regular council meetings are noticed for seven. That's, you know, that's just what we do. Is it an option to notice the regular meeting at seven and possibly extend the six P M workshop, which would then postpone the seven? Does that create any issues?
I'm not sure I'm following you. The, I mean, the regular, it's going to be a regular meeting, so it'll be already noticed because it'll be the second regular meeting in Tuesday. So there's not special notice necessarily that comes out because it's a, a regular meeting. Are you wanting to just start at six and continue on?
That's what I'm thinking. What, what, what does that create any complications with regards to the fact that our regular meeting usually starts at seven?
No, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I think you could just notice it in the agenda that you're going to start the meeting and notice that the meeting will start, the regular meeting will start at six rather than seven. I think you could notice it that way, and then just continue on your meeting from six o'clock. So you'd have to notice it with regard to the change of the regular time because the rules provide that the regular meeting is the first and third Tuesday at seven o'clock.
All right, so just, so then make, make the, make the regular meeting at seven, put that on as a, as a special item on the agenda.
And I think that's just all dependent upon how many people apply. And we don't know the answer to that at this point until the, the closing deadline.
Got it. Okay, sorry, Councilmember Kurtz, didn't mean to put you off that long.
No, I think that was exactly where I was headed. Is can we just, can we just, instead of doing a workshop, do our meeting that starts at six and notice it at six o'clock, and we have a six o'clock that is just one continuous meeting? So if we're able to do that, I think that would make things easier for everybody.
Perfect. And then those interviews usually fall under workshops, then. Okay, if there's no, no objection to that, that's how we will set up the meeting for the fifteenth.
Yeah, I, I concur. I think that's a perfect plan. I did have one question then, and I hate to put whoever this new council member is right on the spot, though. If we, if we do that and we approve them, and then they're sworn in, and then they're asked to vote on a bunch of stuff. I mean, depending on who the person is, you know, then I guess they're going to be drinking from a fire hose. I don't know that there's any way to avoid that, but I just wanted to kind of point that out that, you know, depending on where it is in the agenda, we could be asking them to jump right in and start voting on things.
That, that we run that with anything, that we run into that every time.
It just depend, just depends on what's on the agenda, right? And, and I think a lot of the times, it's, you may just have vouchers, you may just have meeting minutes and things like that because most of the meeting has been taken up by the selection of the new council member.
Yeah. So, Councilmember Van Orman.
So with that being said, is there any way that we can go ahead and take the first part of and start going through so we don't have that issue with the new council member taking over and having to make decisions? Can we get through the vouchers and everything that we need to at the very beginning?
I wonder if what we could do is hold off the swearing in till the, toward the end of the meeting. You could, you could still have a vote on who the next council member is, but swear them in perhaps under gosh, I don't even know where it would go, but somewhere after you know, the, the voting.
I'll tell you what, why don't, why don't we take, there's a lot of open questions. Why don't we take that? And we'll talk about it in directors meeting tomorrow, and Sean, we'll get you involved if we have to. And we'll come back to the council with, with a proposed schedule for that meeting. And obviously, Kelsey still has a lot to go with regards to the to what's on the schedule for the fifteenth. But this is why we go through, you know, every week we meet on the agenda review. So we'll take that action.
Phil, let me interject here real quick if I can, just to answer the question. The answer, Wendy, is yes, you could do that. I think the procedural aspect of it is you would have to change the agenda at the front of the meeting because the way the rules set up and how things are supposed to flow. So I think it's easier with regard to what Jamie has said, where you would just have the swearing in of the individual. Maybe it's just at the end of the meeting, after the selection, and then that way you could go through the process without having to adjust your agenda items. But we can talk through that some more. I just wanted to kind of answer the question that you were asking.
Thank you.
I just had a quick ask. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Go ahead, Councilmember Foyer.
Thank you, if I can. Just want to remind everybody that we're basing this discussion on what, less than four applicants? And second, we're we're assuming that all council members will attend because we will not have the mayor there as a tiebreaker if one of the council members does not make it to the meeting.
That is correct.
So.
Well, actually, oh, yeah, yeah. Well, there should be six of you if everybody shows up. So there's more likely a tie if everybody shows up.
That's what that's my point.
Yeah.
So maybe that's not the ideal time to do it. Not that there'll be a tie, just in case.
Well, if there is a tie, then we can't can't make a motion to bring it back at the next meeting when the mayor's back.
Or or reconvene to executive session and come back out.
Yeah.
I don't know. We'll 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 get you guys answers to all those questions. How's that?
Thank you.
The answer is yes to both.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a quick question of Sean? Just for my clarification here, if we vote, don't we have to swear them in right away? Because then they are elected, right? We can't wait. No, not necessarily. Because think about if when you're elected in November, your swearing in doesn't come right after certification. It may come a little bit later after, say, the other position. So it doesn't have to occur instantly. It can occur afterwards. Okay.
Great. All right, we'll come back to you guys with some some suggestions. All right, Kelsey, sorry, we we stepped away from the few the March fifteenth items. Go ahead.
That's okay. I guess that's it as far as workshops for agenda items that you'll likely see on the fifteenth. There'll be a service agreement for landscape and arborist services, a proclamation for Autism Awareness Month, a presentation from the Parks and Arts Commission regarding a possible Hoop Fest, Hoop Town project, a purchase for Kubota R T V, approval of city surplus items, possibly an award of contract for the Mission Avenue sidewalk project and Agranicus contract renewal. And then I guess, Lisa, would you like to touch on rescheduling the M T C zone change hearing?
Yes, my apologies, Mayor and City Council. I will be out of town from March twenty-second through March thirtieth. And so we would talk about having a special meeting for the M T C zone change hearing on March, I don't remember which date it was.
Twenty-ninth, I think, Lisa.
Twenty-nine, yeah, the twenty-ninth. Anyhow, because I'm going to be out of town, we can't do it on that night. I've talked to the applicant and he's unavailable on April twelfth, so it which I believe is the which is the next Tuesday opportunity that's not a council meeting. So so he will, he will be will both be available on April twenty-sixth. If that is a date that would work for City Council to hold the M T C hearing. As we talked about previously, my concern in holding it on a regular regularly scheduled council meeting is that it's been a fairly long proceeding, both at Planning Commission and at City Council, and it will I think I don't think that either of the hearings was less than two hours. And so my concern is to try and do it on a regular council night is it may not give you adequate time to deliberate.
So if if anybody knows now that that date won't work, let us know, or if you need to go back and look at your calendars. Lisa, we'll we'll confirm that for you in the next day or so.
Oh, that that would be wonderful if you could. Again, I've got I've got some time before I have to do noticing, but possibly we could firm that up on the the March fifteenth, at the March fifteenth council meeting, if that would be. So so please check your calendars and see if that's going to work. And we will certainly will be, talk about it then. So thank you.
Perfect. All right. Is there anything we're missing for the fif- the fifteenth? If not, is there anything workshop-wise or topic that anybody wants to look at adding to agendas past that? Councilmember Cargill.
Kelsey, can you put up or maybe Todd has, somebody has a copy of the workshop list that we've been working on?
One second.
Oh, perfect. Thank you very much. So all of these, it looks like all of them, but one is TBD. Is that right?
Well, yeah, and the lime.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, the lime scooters, it's just that's really TBD as well.
I'm wondering if we can bring the utility tax one at one of the April meetings. I would prefer, Councilmember Dunn might feel the same way. I would prefer it and not be at the April fifth meeting just because I'm gonna be gone in New Orleans celebrating the Zags' final four victory. And Councilmember Dunn might be as well. But I just know that that's been a topic of discussion for quite some time. So I'm wondering if we can do one of the April meetings with that.
Can we put it on tentatively for the second one? And Kyle, I know there's a lot of prep that you need for that. And I know you and I have talked about some an option that might we might have to present. So if we can put that on tentatively for that would be the nineteenth, then then Councilmember Cargill, Kyle, I can get together and see if we can pull the information together by then.
Yeah, that works for me.
Does that work, Kyle? Sorry.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. And then in addition, if I'm not being too forward, I wouldn't mind putting the financial policy updates if council is agreeable to that on the first meeting in April.
Isn't that is that spring break week as well?
It is, yeah.
I know who who all was.
We can, yeah, so we can we can jockey that as needed, but I'd just like to get it on the radar just because we're gonna start going through that pretty pretty quickly here.
Okay. All right, we'll we'll put some tentative dates on there and and we'll do some cleanup as well because there's some things on here that I know have my name on it that really aren't, don't need to be on the list anymore. So and I know, Kelsey, you had tentative scope presentation. I don't know if Chief is still, there he is, Chief is still with us. I think, you know, he and I had talked, Chief, if you can hop on with regards to scope presentation, I know we had talked about other options besides reengaging further with 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 scope and doing something more local to Liberty Lake. Do you so do you want to put that off?
If we could, there we have some things that we're exploring right now. We're doing preliminary research on, so it'd be great if we could put that off and we can come back to the council at a later date and give them an update on what we're working on.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm not asking for this to be on a March date or necessarily even April, but I would like for us to revisit as soon as possible spending of A R P dollars.
Yep, yeah. And, you know, I'm surprised that's not on there. It's it's on, I think it's on everybody's mind. Oh, there it is. It is.
I would definitely like for us to address that by May if possible.
Sure.
One more question.
Yep, go ahead.
This might be a question for David. We had that turn lane workshop on there that we put postpone. Do is that needed to be done by any specific time?
No, it does not need to be done in a specific time. We can we can revisit it at any time you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Great. And Councilmember Kurtz, sorry if I missed your hand. I had scrolled up on my
screen. You're fine down there. You mentioned spring break. Is anybody else going anywhere? I mean, I'm, we're looking for a quorum and stuff during that week. Are people going places? I'm going someplace, so I won't be here, but.
So I know you'll be out possibly, Councilmember Cargill, and possibly Councilmember Dunn, and you don't know about our new person. So we'll keep a real close eye on it. So I I think it's to to be determined whether or not we'll have a quorum.
All right.
Phil, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I don't know if Kyle, is this coincides with what you just put on the agenda, but I think at some point here very soon, we should revisit the paragraph twenty-four in our budget regarding Trailhead.
Absolutely.
So sooner than later on that one.
Yeah, so then and we will incorporate that into the financial policy and then at the very, very latest, that would be incorporated into a presentation slash budget amendment when we finalize bond sale.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, lots coming up. Anybody else? All right, we are up to citizen comments. Again, I know we have a couple of people waiting very patiently. We have Greg Cronin first and then Tim Olson. Mr. Cronin, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Just three comments. First one is, is I know you guys couldn't hear me, but I was applauding the decision in the bill, the design and build team as well as the council for the progress on Trailhead. That was just, I don't know what it was, but boy, there's something uplifting about seeing that moving forward. The other thing was the the lady that gave the presentation about the golf club. I found that to be a great presentation, extremely educational, and I really learned more about the possible uses of that overall facility. So, you know, that just helps reinforce that decision. And if there's other clubs that might be able to come forward and help share some of that knowledge, I would certainly like to welcome that. And at a conversation with an elderly neighborhood couple today that required the assistance from our emergency services, both the fire department and the police department, they responded. And to see how emotionally these people were touched by the compassion they were given from these people was just absolutely heartwarming. So I just want to publicly state that I just sincerely appreciate those guys and the service that they provided. So that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Tim Olson.
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. I just want to say I echo the comments from Mr. Cronin about Trailhead. Thank you very much to the City Council and the prior members over the last several weeks for investigating, venting and pushing for answers for Trailhead. I really think that we and you have so much more information to work on and that you have flexed the necessary muscle to let the contractors and planners know that we're serious about this budget. I hope that as citizens, you stick to this budget. I'm a huge fan of Trailhead. But I have to say, I did notice that in a week, the price per square foot for construction of the restaurant went from two dollars a square foot to two seventy-five, which is on two hundred twenty-six hundred square feet, just over two hundred thousand. I'll let you figure out why. Bill, you can probably get those those details. As far as Resolution twenty-two dash two ninety-eight, I did not make any comments when that came up for public comment, but I want to encourage the City Council, if you're interested to look at the median at the exit of the shopping center at Walgreens and Starbucks near McDonald's, take a look. I probably personally witnessed the snow removal team clearing snow and somebody hit the median that was loud enough to catch my attention while I was working in my office near Starbucks. I only mention this because it was about three guys came out and took a look at things and it was an isolated incident. And I wouldn't worry about it as a council member because I think it's a regular, this is a regular occurrence and it's not going to be something that's gonna be something you have to worry about in the future. And also, as a member of the Liberty Lake Quads, please buy your tickets soon. We're gonna have a great dance this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. As always, Mr. Olson. Okay, I think that is about it. So if you don't have any other comments or any opposition, anybody opposed from the council, we will adjourn the meeting. Any any opposed? Don't think so. All right, nine twenty-three, I think that my speed earliest we've gotten out for a while. So thanks, everybody, for your hard work and we'll see you again in a couple of weeks. Thanks.